Welcome to the February 18, 2025 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing nobody either here in the room or online, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is to establish a quorum. I will ask Shereen Davis, please to announce herself. She's online with us tonight.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
And Mr. Shell is present, and Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Our, we have a bit of a lengthy agenda tonight. We have two sets of minutes, January 14 and February 7. We have then next, public announcements and agenda requests. We have a public hearing. I think we have more than one pub, no, we just have one public hearing, an application for a new seasonal all-alcoholic beverages, restaurant license. Then we have public comments on the business agenda, and I'm going to make one change here. I neglected, we have, we're accepting public comments on the warrant article that relates to the grinder pump policy, and so I'm going to invite and welcome public comment alongside the board for that item, which is item C. The business agenda consists of, first, a finance committee preliminary fiscal 26, budget recommendation and report to the select board from the chairman of the finance committee, Mr. Daniel, who's with us this evening. Next, we will consider one-day alcohol license for Holy Redeemer Church. Third, as I mentioned, is the second read of the grinder pump policy continued from February 4, and public comment will be welcomed and accepted alongside the board during that discussion. Fourth is considering a license to enter and use real town property at 608-610 Stage Harbor Road. Fifth is a fiscal 26 budget review of the general government and other undesignated section of the budget. Next is a series of 2025 annual town meeting warrant articles to be reviewed. The first is voting and recommending posting the post-employment benefits liability trust appropriation. Next is a vote to place and recommend a capital project expansion and renovation of the CFAL, and that also will allow and welcome public comments alongside the board. Third is vote and place and recommend a capital project for the transfer station project, and again, public comments accepted alongside the board for that one. Next is placing and recommending the wastewater project continuation borrowing authorization and ballot question, and that is, we'll accept and welcome public comments alongside the board for that one. Next is placing and recommending the fiscal 26 wastewater and capital stabilization funding. Number six is referring a petitioned protective zoning bylaw amendment pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. We've had that discussed in previous select board meetings. Number seven is a vote to refer a proposed protective zoning bylaw and zoning map relating to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw that is comprehensively dealing with the neighborhood center, and will have public comment accepted alongside of that one as well. Next is considering a request by the Harwood Select Board Chair to convene a meeting with two of their select board members and two of ours alongside of the town managers and the town finance directors. And that will conclude our evening tonight, hopefully before it gets too late. Item number one are the minutes of January 14.
Move the minutes.
Second. Do we have any comments? Mr. Nacastro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two. First on page seven, two-thirds of the way down, the paragraph that begins with my name. This is the motion in the second line, the fifth line from the right, strike the word "from" and insert "for the," an Article four, they may. Twenty twenty-five town meeting. And then on page 10, I did not go back and watch the video on this, so I could be wrong, but this is on, way down at the bottom, Mr. Dykens's motion, and maybe Jeff remembers this better than I do, but I thought what we were asking and what we voted was to change the speed limit on principal streets in thickly settled areas. I didn't know, I didn't recall that it was all thickly settled areas, but I could be wrong on that.
We had some discussion, Dean. I'm not sure if it's principal streets or not. I thought we ended up with thickly settled areas.
Okay, I'll let it go.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion as to exactly what we were saying, but I think after we heard from Deputy Chief Malzone, we concluded that we would create more confusion if we tried to reduce it anywhere where there wasn't a sign. So, if I may, I just have one on page 12. The eighth paragraph, second line, the line that begins the addition of one police officer. At the end, it says, first of all, we, I think you want to say, "have not had full employment." Chief Anderson made the comment that he hadn't had an increase since a year, and I don't remember the year.
Eighty-six, I think.
Okay, well, then we should put in since nineteen, is that right, Jill?
It was definitely nineteen eighties. I recalled eighty.
Yeah, I thought it was eighty-five or eighty-six, but I didn't remember for sure. Okay, fine, if we can make that change. With that, roll call, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
The minutes of February 7.
Mr. Chair, they're actually the minutes of February 4th. It was just a typo on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Those are included in the packet as February 4th.
And it does say February 4th. Okay, any?
I do, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, on page 11, the very last paragraph, starting with Director Lacrosse. She noted a decrease in expenses due to family pantry of Cape Cod, Duffy Health Center, and Independence House not requesting funds. In fact, Duffy Health Center did request funds, and while was enumerated, was granted $3,000, and so that's just an error.
So, we should strike the knot?
Yes, strike it, yeah.
Yes, so that was discovered after the meeting. Staff had looked into it and found indeed that they were approved for $3,000.
Okay. Dean, go ahead.
I have some edits, but I don't think we had a motion on this, so I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I had three. Page six, up at the top, the first full paragraph, second line, last word, "less." I think it should read, "installation costs including any potential electrical costs." This is the $2,000 figure. I was puzzled by the word "less." That was my understanding.
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
Next, on page seven, I just wanted to clarify, this is the one, two, three, four, fifth full paragraph, there was a question from some members of the board. The third line, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee was asked to review, I would strike, was asked to review. I would insert in its place, had considered scheduling a meeting to review. And then at the end of that line, I would strike everything from "through" the meeting to the end of the sentence, and I would substitute, "but that was canceled." So, it would read, "Water and Sewer Committee had considered scheduling a meeting to review the proposed policy about a month ago, but that was canceled." Period. That, I think, is more accurately what they did. And then on page eight, the first full paragraph, Mr. Nacastro recommended. In the second line, I would insert after the phrase, "in order to allow the Water and Sewer Committee to review."
Okay.
Thank you. Those are the edits.
I just have a couple. I'll try to be real quick. The first set appear on page three, and I've given these to Kathy, so I'll do them relatively quickly. On page three, first of all, in the, I'm really amending the, that first big paragraph beginning with the fourth line, put a comma after the word "agreement" on the right, and then strike the word "including" and insert specifically. And then the line that begins with "provided," each one of those should be at and below the percentage, so it would read, "provided at and below 60% AMI and at and below 30% AMI and at and below 100% AMI." And then same change in the, the next to the last line, "current access and below the abutters to the north may not be impeded." Sorry, access for the abutters. Then in the paragraph that begins, the board asked about the language, second line, "interest accrued on the loan." And then in the last paragraph, at the end, I would revise that, those two lines, to say, "sold access would be discussed at that time period. She also said she was unable to answer a question on, about aneeasement by necessity at this time." On page, also on page, oh, I gave you that one. Page five, the first full paragraph, next to the last line, I would change that slightly, and it was stated it was the language proposed in response to the amendment recommended by Attorney Pallone. And I think that's it. That's all I have. With that, I will call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Next, public announcements and agenda requests. Do we have any from the board? Any from the public? I don't see anybody here, anybody online. Okay, moving right along. Public hearing. Shereen, do you want to read that, or should I ask one of my colleagues here to do that?
No, I'm fine to read it. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 18, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261, George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a request for a new seasonal all-alcohol beverages restaurant license for Hem Pham LLC doing business as Chatham Moods, 1617 Main Street, Orlando Hemming Manager. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you. Mr. Hemmings and Mr. Norcross?
Yes, good evening. Jamie Norcross, representing Chatham Moods. This is Orlando Hemmings, the owner of the restaurant. Orlando has been in business for about two and a half years now for Chatham Moods, and he's looking to incorporate alcohol service into the restaurant. Orlando told me he's asked quite often by folks coming in, inquiring us whether or not drinks are available, so he thinks it'll be a nice addition to the, to his business. Orlando, along with being the owner, will also be the manager of record for the liquor license, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. From the board?
Does the seasonal license change?
Yes, it'll be seasonal.
All alcohol, seasonal?
Seasonal, all alcohol. That's correct.
Thanks.
Anybody else? From the public? Any questions? I don't see anybody in the room, anybody online? I'll just say I've been there, and I think that's a good addition, so I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you. I'll take a motion.
With approval. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks very much. Good luck. So, next, we have public comments on the business agenda with the exception of those items that I mentioned, and I won't impose on you to reread those again, so hopefully you'll remember. Any comments on the rest of the business agenda? Ms.
Ms. Gibbs is on.
Gibbs, Ms. Gibbs, sorry.
Yes, thank you very much. My comments relate to F8, and that is the meeting requested by Harwich to discuss the municipal agreement. There's nothing in this agenda item as to why the meeting is being called or any documents in the package, however, it has been in the paper. And budget presentations that Harwich wants more money from us, I don't believe Chatham should consider any revision to the agreement for a number of reasons. As was discussed at some of the presentations, the minimum local contribution is the number determined by the state based on property value, resident income, and foundation enrollment. When that was done, Chatham was assessed 6.8% versus Harwich at 4.7. So, we are paying more there. And as far as the enrollment is concerned, the total enrollment for the Montanway School District is 1,728 students. That's who are actually attending. Chatham's assessment is 11.217 million. Harwich's assessment is 31.5 million. Harwich has 1,373 students attending, and Chatham has 355. So, they have 79.5% of the population. We have 20.5. The cost per pupil of those attending, Harwich is paying under these assessments $22,945 per student, and Chatham is paying $31,598. I think we're paying more than our fair share. Not included in these assessments is how much we're going to have to spend to renovate and repair the Chatham Elementary School. If you recall, we learned after it was turned over to us that it needed new roof, boilers, windows, pump generators, and doors. Based on the numbers we're getting on the middle school, I would say that could potentially cost Chatham millions, and we are solely responsible for those repairs. I don't think we should agree to any further increases assessed to Chatham when we are already paying $31,000 per student. I reviewed the DESE, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are over 400 schools that are listed in there about actual enrollment, and the most recent figures were from 2023, but I think they're pretty solid. And of those 400 schools, only three or four were over $32,000. And it was Cambridge and a few schools in the Boston area. I think that we can assume, based on what Mr. Carpenter said at the last meeting in terms of the middle school, that originally the price looked like it was going to be $6 million, but he said if the windows have to replace, be replaced, that could be an additional $12 million, which is going to be $18 million, which means we're going to have to pay a percentage of that as well on top of the elementary school. I think we're paying our fair share. I think the priority has to be our elementary schools. I'm concerned that we are using up most of our free cash, and I think we should save some of that free cash, take a few off the list that you're currently considering. We have to have money in the bank because we will know by town meeting whether or not, how much it's going to cost us to fix the middle school, and I think we have to have that money available. Not, because you know, it's public health and safety. That has to be the priority of government is public health and safety, and certainly for our children. So, I would hope that if you decide to go and have that meeting, that no, nobody goes weak in the knees and agrees to any more money to Harwich at this point, because I think we're paying more than our fair share. And I would hope, since it's not an executive session meeting, that it will be recorded so the public can see it, either watch it live or see it on demand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I may, I have a comment and a request. I'll start with a request. It's been my experience in the past that on occasion, your remarks are prepared and written down, and you've shared them with us in the past. If that's the case with these, I'd like to request that you share them with us so that we, not only is our knees strengthened, but our back is strengthened. And second, the comment is, if you will, you know, that's up to you, but I think it would be very helpful. Secondly, I believe, my recollection, I can be corrected, but I think that Dr. Carpenter's comment on the increment that's introduced by the windows might take the total up to $12 million, not that it was $12 million for the windows, so the total was now 18. But I think it's important that we have that be accurate. I don't know if anybody here remembers. I don't know if anybody here remembers that, but...
Yours was the same as mine.
Yeah, I think that's the case. So why don't we just say that it's up in the air, but it may be only 12 million, not 18, so. Any other public comments? Okay. Thank you very much for all of that. Turning to the business agenda, I'm going to turn the floor over to Chairman Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate the opportunity to present the initial thoughts of the Finance Committee to the Select Board. We received the Town Manager's budget about a month ago. We have met with most, if not all, of the department heads, began work today on various articles, CPC articles and CPA articles, and some of the sewer and water work. The observations we have for you tonight are preliminary. And in summary, the operating budget, as we can see in the screen, $44.154 million, an 8.19% change from last year. Capital plan at $3.162 million, which is up about 31% from the prior year's request, but still only represents 6.82% of what policy calls for, 9%. So well within the policy guidelines. The MRSD, as previously noted, is 11.217 and 8.81%. Cape Tech, we're keeping a roster of 20 students at the tech. And between the operating assessment and the capital assessment for the new building, we landed 588,000, 2.17% increase for a total nut of $59,122,045, an increase of 9.26%. That does not, of course, include standalone warrant articles, which will be coming in turn. In general, it's our understanding that wages are about 71% of the proposed budget, the operating budget. Those wages, of course, are contractual and step-based. Expenses are generally level funded where possible, which in this operating environment strikes us as an admirable achievement. And I think in a sentence, we think this is a good intentional budget. It should probably come as a surprise to no one that nevertheless, we have a couple of things to observe. So, Carrie, can you flick the next slide possibly, please? So the first topic we want to give a little shout out to is our commitment to sufficient high-quality potable water for the Town of Chatham. We've made the observation repeatedly, and I think it's shared by all the members of the Select Board, that that's the egg on which our goose sits. I think too often in the past several years, we've kind of come too close to temporarily exhausting that supply. Demand is high, especially in the summer months, as we're all aware. We're at the mercy of our well system and our rainfall. And between those, too much demand, what I will suggest is the mispricing of the municipal asset and misuse of the municipal asset. We think we are somewhat at risk. In his presentation, Rob Failey observed to us that there are two or three potential well incremental well sites in the Town of Chatham, but he did not necessarily think that they would be worth the investment in term of how much gallage they would return. So if, in fact, that turns out to be the case, we're essentially dealing with our existing supply on a going-forward basis. And while water pricing is complicated, one of our first, our first recommendation is for the Water and Sewer Commissioners to encourage the Commissioners to conduct a detailed water review in an effort to appropriately price the asset. The chart up ahead of us there is based on data from the University of North Carolina Environmental Finance Center. It's a survey of all Massachusetts utilities with between 3,000 and 10,000 water accounts. And what I pulled out of that data are all the Cape water districts or town water companies. Blue represents low pricing, so consistently sandwich is astonishingly low, especially compared to the sample max. And Chatham is pretty much at the low end of things. The high rates are in the orange, and there are three columns, 2,000 gallons, 5,000 gallons, and 7,500 gallons. And you can see that Chatham is pretty much near the bottom all across the board. And while, again, water pricing is a challenging thing, there's questions around the elasticity of water pricing. You need to cover a high level of fixed costs with a variably priced commodity, variable demand commodity. But most of the experts around water pricing thinks that municipalities and cities generally misprice their water. The state of Massachusetts has a really interesting website around water pricing, which has got some interesting information in it, and some models and some conundrums, but all of which is to say that we think that it would benefit the Town of Chatham and perhaps the use profile to consider reevaluating where we are in the pricing scale, to the extent we can mitigate some demand through changes in the pricing model, and hopefully perhaps a greater emphasis as well on conservation. I know we have our little street side placards out in various parts of town when there's kind of a water emergency or drought proclamation. We're not sure how compelling those are and how mindful people may be of them. So we just think that some attention needs to be paid to this issue, which, of course, we're aware that you guys are paying attention to, but specifically around the pricing. The second heading underwater, I'm going to reiterate something we mentioned last year. We have now 90 new units of housing, kind of well in train, over the next couple of years. If I'm not mistaken, I think the Select Board has noted that they would like to have 200 units of housing over the next, I think, five years. And we just urge all the stakeholders now, which is the Affordable Housing Trust, Community Development, DPW, Town Manager, Select Board, to make sure that we have ample supply of water for those 90 to 200 new homes. So that's the first thing we want to flag. Carrie, thank you. So from the town's budget and financial management policies, this will come as no surprise to anybody who's been paying attention to us for the last four or five years. It shall be the goal, it shall be the goal of the town to achieve and maintain an annual certification of free cash in the amount of 3% to 5% of the town's general fund operating budget. Next slide, please. So of these 10 free cash numbers, it immediately comes to mind that nine of the 10 exceed policy range. I've not taken the time to average these, and arguably FY25 is slightly inflated, somewhat inflated, because of timing issues and things that should or should not have happened from a timing standpoint. But even if the FY25 is half of what the number should be, which is an approximation, I think, a fair approximation, we're still at 12%. We've been talking about free cash now, as I said, for four or five years, and we honestly just don't get why, nobody really seems to care about this except for the Finance Committee. It's an unnecessary burden on taxpayers. It can facilitate kind of the skirting of the will of town meeting by requiring a 50% vote to expend funds rather than a prospective 2/3 vote. And we are just sort of flummoxed by why there's no effort to focus on this number and try to rein it in. So that's of continuing concern to us, and we would hope that this chart might lead people to think maybe we should be a little more focused on what our policies are. I don't understand the point of policies if we're not going to adhere to them. And I guess I would add, too, that the Mass Department of Revenue, the 3% to 5% is their policy as well. So we didn't make this up. It's a statewide policy guidance. So enough on that, but I think, Carrie, nothing for the time being. The Center for Active Living, we've not yet had a formal presentation. That's next week on the CFAL project, but we are broadly supportive of a resolution to, as I think I've called it, the nomadic wandering of the CFAL project over the last four or five or six or seven or eight years. It would seem as though the proposed work on the existing Stony Hill facility, again, notwithstanding the fact we've not had a formal presentation, as well as its prospective budget, seems to have a lot to offer and does seem to be responsive to the concerns expressed by voters at the various town meetings, I think three of them now. So I think for those reasons, we're eager to get our presentation next week, and more to come on that, but we do think it would be a timely opportunity to try to get this issue nailed down once and for all, or at least for the next 20 to 40 years. The proposed operating budget includes a request for five new hires, community development, CP patrol officer, natural resources, each getting one, and DPW slash parks and grounds getting two. That's an 18.4% growth, 25 positions over the last six years. We had a pretty good run of kind of staff stability until, as we can see, there's been this fairly significant ramping up since 2021. I think it's fair to say that the department heads, the town manager, finance director have made the case to us for these hires, but nevertheless, we note 25%, 18% growth, I'm sorry, 25 positions, 18% growth over six years is not insignificant. We note that unfunded mandates from the state continue, projects are growing increasingly complex, regulatory environment is constantly in flux, and honestly, the expectation for service from residents and visitors is high. So we kind of get it, but we would hope to keep an eye on this number on a going-forward basis. In addition to the five new hires this year, you'll probably remember that we have three positions equating to two full-time equivalents at the adult daycare program, which are no longer being supported in 26 by the grant that was initially received. So while we're having five new employees, we're actually taking on seven, technically eight, but seven full-time equivalent salaries in the proposed fiscal year operating budget. Crawl Road, one of our other favorite topics. We understand that the Crawl Road realignment project is not a topic of current conversation, but we do understand that the 25% design phase is nearing completion. We do recall the reluctance of many members of the Select Board who voiced concerns about moving forward with the project before nevertheless voting to advance it to the 25% design phase. It would be hard to overemphasize the unanimous opposition of the Finance Committee to this project, and what we believe to be the everlasting adverse impact, we believe this project will have in the face and shape of our community's public gateway. We note our prior police chief's, excuse me, assessment that there's no significant increase in the incident rate at that intersection. We note that it is not on the Cape Cod Commission's list of 50 most dangerous intersections on Cape Cod. We know our former fire chief's assertion that the primary solution for their challenges of getting through the intersection would be a traffic preemption system, which our emergency vehicles are all equipped with transmitters for. The question is the receivers actually on the control units, on the lights themselves. Obviously, there'd be some interchange with the state in that regard, since much of that's their intersection. But we, and so we fully appreciate the public safety concerns, especially regarding fire department access, but we believe there are materially less impactful and expensive opportunities to clean this intersection up, for lack of a better term. Public safety recruitment. We are supportive of the Town Manager's recommendation of adding one patrol officer to the roster of the Police Department. We understand currently from the chief, there's one open spot. They have had some challenges in recruiting. You're all, I'm sure, aware that we instituted both a referral bonus and a signing bonus for new officers, 2,500, I think, for the referral, and 7,500 for the signing bonus. That was apparently very productive, but apparently as other towns in the Cape have similarly instituted such policies. So the arms race is on. We don't see a lot of value in two open positions on the police force. I think there's a few things less helpful than that, perhaps. And we were wondering if there are ways that the police command staff, the town manager, the head of HR can think of other kind of incentive programs or something to try to draw more applicants to fill these positions. We're cognizant that the Police Department, as the Town Manager has reminded us, the Police Department is but one department in the town, and any potential recruitment strategies need to be considered in the context of the town's overall recruitment process. But we just hope there will be a way, since the need has been demonstrated, for these two incremental officers to get these spots filled up as soon as we possibly can. Short-term rental fee increase. The town is essentially facing an unfunded mandate from the state to perform inspections pursuant to a recently updated Massachusetts State Building Code. Recollection is that the $75,000 position can be somewhat offset by the current short-term rental fee of $50. It was the sense of the committee that we should look to increase that short-term rental fee from $50 to between 100 and 150 in an effort to further defray the prospective cost of that position. Again, very roughly, if memory serves, I think we have somewhere around 900 short-term rentals on our roster. A quick look at the state registry shows over 1,600. So somewhere along the line, we're missing 700 short-term rentals that, if we could figure out a way to kind of track them down and get them in, which I'm sure we will over time, certainly would add to the coffers to defray this position on a going-forward basis. So we had a unanimous vote of a motion to support, again, an increase from 50 to somewhere between 100 and 150. Tangential to that, the committee believes strongly that considerations should be given by the Select Board to establishing more formal policies around town imposed fees, including some consideration of desired cost recovery percentages, as well as a formal timetable for the periodic review of such fees. It was pointed out by one member of the committee who used to work for the town that, I think, our building permit fees have not been increased in 15 years, she believed. So we would hope that consideration should be given by the Select Board to creating some paradigm around that, as well as some goals around, again, cost recovery. And that would apply to most everything, building permits, transfer station rates, water rates, inspection fees, beach access fees. Chamber of Commerce. We have had, as, again, a casual observer of our work might be aware of, we've been pretty displeased with the financial transparency of the chamber over the last several years. The new leadership at the chamber has done a terrific job, we think, in unveiling more of that financial transparency that had previously been lacking. We have been frustrated by that lack of transparency and had been on the cusp of recommending either no funding for the chamber, or that we strictly fund salaries associated with the information booth. We're keenly aware that 549 Main Street does not need a lot of tourists coming in asking where they can get their poodle washed on a Saturday. But we also don't think it's necessarily appropriate that the Town of Chatham be paying more... more for the Chamber of Commerce activities than the members of the Chamber of Commerce itself. One idea that we discussed was a matching program where whatever their membership raised, we, the town of Chatham, would match. We also discussed, as I said, just funding salaries and not funding the economic development. It's kind of hard, we think, to isolate what those economic development dollars do. The goal is to increase off-season economic engagement and activities in the town of Chatham, but dollars are fungible, so it's kind of hard to know exactly what we might be getting for the $20,000 standalone economic development allocation. Where we landed on this was that, given the work that's being done this year by the new executive director of the chamber and assertions she has made about what they plan to do over the coming year, we're content to sort of stand pat on the number. But again, depending on kind of how this whole rolls out, we, we will possibly revisit this next year. With respect to the town of Chatham budget and financial management policies previously mentioned, the last comprehensive review and update of that policy suite was 2019. We have a new finance director and thought that it might not be inappropriate to have an update of the financial management policies before too much longer. Again, that's one of these things that if it were sort of fit into a schedule of fee review and just every X years, we're going to review our policies to make sure we're doing what we should be doing. We're not aware of any kind of omissions or commissions currently in the policies, but again, just think it's prudent that these things be looked at from time to time, especially when we have a new finance director in house, to ensure that we're doing what we want to do and how we want to do it. And then lastly, before I'll take any questions that you guys may have, we learned of a incipient undertaking to update the town financial management system. We are using apparently a creaky Microsoft database management system that's old, not supported, not upgraded for quite some time, and that doesn't make a lot of sense for us. You know, in a town where we variously spend between 60 and 80 to 90 million dollars a year, we think we should be running the state of, a state-of-the-art financial management system. The system is used by every municipal department in town, and we think that a new platform would improve efficiency and reporting, would streamline tasks, enhance collaboration and compliance, lead to a reduction in manual data entry errors, and ultimately to better decision-making. So, I guess what we heard was that there was a, again, a sort of an incipient three-year plan to try to roll into this new system of evaluating, selecting, purchasing, upgrading, rolling out. We would hope that something like that could be expedited because it seems vitally important, especially given the complexities of what we're all dealing with here these days and the, and the scale. So, it's not, it's not going to be long before we have a $100 million comprehensive budget, whether it's debt authorizations, and we've gotten quite close to that a couple of years ago, and we, again, think we should be operating on the best available platform. That's it.
Thank you. If I, this is a process question. Would it be appropriate to offer the finance director and the town manager an opportunity to make any comment they want to, or ask?
Absolutely. It's your meeting, but we'd be delighted by it.
Maybe before the board has anything. Not, not required, but if you, if there's anything you want to comment on or?
Doesn't have to be.
Enlighten us about. Jill? Carrie?
Sure, Mr. Chair. We really greatly appreciate the input and our presentations to the finance committee. So, some of the items you heard in the report have been just a matter of timing in discussions with the FinCon before we presented it to the select board, for which we'll hear tonight, mostly the, the general operating budget as well as the technology plan. I mean, we, we welcome any kind of input and advice, but we also are constrained by mass general law of how much we can do. And when it comes to forecasting revenues, state law says that we can't exceed 90% of prior year actuals. So, granted, we have that in our forecasting model, we have financial management policies, and everything has, even with the new finance director, I mean, it's, everything is working quite well. And so, I don't want anyone to interpret the finance committee's report as that there's been any wrongdoing and to miss a point on a free cash policy where the free cash policy, the DOR, was meant for towns who did not certify any free cash, and they were encouraging at least a minimum of three to 5%. So, that's something we want to take a look at. We want to take a look at all the financial policies. There's a number of them, including debt. And as we talk at our budget summits, we typically have those included in case there's any conversation. So, again, we, we welcome the input and certainly your response. You will be presented with the final budget next week to transmit to the finance committee, and then that's the actual budget that will be voted at town meeting. I'm controlling myself and not getting more into the Crawl Road intersection project, having walk it every weekend, and it's pedestrian access and ADA accessible without a cross wad or any kind of signal there. But I, I, I feel that once we get the, the final designs, which are taken a number of years, and anytime there is any movement on that, Teri is really great about including that into, in his monthly report. So, we'll see what comes, and certainly it will be up to the board. And I'll, I'm having to turn it over to Carrie if she has anything new.
Can I just jump in quickly before?
Sure, please.
I, in no way and in no fashion do I want to imply that there was any wrongdoing or anything nefarious about the town finances. I would, I would emphasize, things work very well. We are delighted with Carrie. She's, she's been absolutely terrific to work with. We think that the, the financial management of this town, whether the finance director or the town manager, is beyond reproach, and we are so fortunate for it. That doesn't mean we can't look for little ways to try to do better. That's our responsibility, but in no way is there anything, any wrongdoing, nefarious, whatever. It's a very, very tight ship.
Carrie?
Thank you. I think Stephen's report is very good, and I appreciate all of the input that all of the finance committee has done on the report, and I concur with Jill on a lot that she has already said. I look forward to working with everybody on the finance committee and also looking at our financial policies and looking at those deeper and seeing what we can change, if anything, on those, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll go to the board. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Stephen, for your report and to the entire finance committee. As a former member of the finance committee, I greatly respect the independent voice that this committee brings to town government, and I hope that continues. And we have a wonderful assortment of expertise on the committee and its membership, so I want that out there. Let me just touch on a few things that you've talked about. With respect to free cash, as Jill has indicated, some of the sort of governmental aspects that have led to the town's handling of free cash, let me just add that the items that have, the agenda items, the articles that have gone before town meeting for capital expenditure that have drawn from free cash, I don't recall any of them being particularly controversial items. I think that should be kept in mind. And I think historically, I don't think it was, not that you suggested this, but I don't think that there was ever a motivation to try to avoid a two-thirds vote on any of those items since I've been on this board. It's just that we've had free cash available and we, we thought we should take advantage of it. I'm going to try to take advantage of it later this evening and before your committee on Thursday, when the CFAL comes up, because I'd like to see that fully funded out of free cash. But I just think that's there, and if we're going to look at the financial policies in terms of reviewing them, which I think is a good suggestion, we might want to think about whether the three to 5% should be revised or should it be a minimum? I'm not saying we should go up to 10 or 12%. That's, that's a lot. We do know that, as you have recognized before, that the accountants like to have free cash, but it's a legitimate issue that you raise, and I would throw another issue into the mix if the finance committee ever wants to look at it, and that's the, the 1.3 or $2 million that is collected with the Community Preservation Act surtax. Maybe it's time that we take a look at whether we should be surtaxing people 3%. I'm not saying get rid of it. I know we had two former selectmen who tried to get rid of it a few years ago, and I opposed its elimination, but as you know, Mr. Chairman, when we were looking at the OPEB, we were faced with the sun setting of the land bank tax, and we didn't take all 3% of that and apply it to OPEB. We took only 1.5%. We gave the other half, 1.5% back to the taxpayers, and it's worth $600,000 this year. So, that might be something to take a look at. On water, I fully agree with you about it. I think this whole board agrees that water is a number-one priority in this town. That chart that you presented, I hadn't seen that before. You perhaps are aware, but if, if others are not, I would point out that the staff is currently reviewing water rates, and I expect they're going to come to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee because that committee is interested in looking at them as well and get a recommendation from them. We revised them about seven or eight years ago, and obviously, according to this chart, way out of, out of whack. And I know that this board has emphasized in our goals and objectives that we should also address seriously conservation initiatives. We do have some material that has been presented to us by the Water and Sewer Committee in the form of a matrix, which this, this board has as a tool. And with respect to the additional housing units, putting pressure on the water infrastructure, I fully agree with you. I have raised that question at this board and that issue at the Water and Sewer Committee, and there's been some discussion before then. Crawl Road. Mr. Matters and I tried to kill this project several years ago. I offered a motion to terminate it. We lost two to three. When it came up for the 25%, I, I voted unanimously with, unanimously with the board to move it forward, and I was largely moved by the urging of the fire chief and the police chief. That's what really got me to move in that direction. However, it's going to come back to us when, when it's ready for the 25% for further review, and I'm going to be very skeptical about it because I, I agree with you that there may be some more limited things we can and should do to improve access and safety there without possibly turning this into a citified look, which I don't, as someone who lives downtown, I wouldn't want to see that there. The number of employees that we've added, I've been concerned as well, but at the same time, I've supported every recommendation that the town manager has made for new staff. And I even pushed to have the, the school resource officer position created a few years ago from this, which was supported by the rest of the board. But the growth in staff really reflects the growth in demand for services, as you recognize, from the public. And unfortunately, it's much more complicated to run a municipal government in Massachusetts these days than it was in the past. So, we have to keep that in mind, but we should also, you know, keep, keep our eyes on the number of employees that we have. I think I've covered everything that I wanted to say, other than I tried to get some, an amendment to the, to the financial policies this year. Your committee supported it by majority vote, but it was not, not passed by my board. I intend to bring that back at some point in the next year, so maybe that will be part of the review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Dean.
Shereen, is your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Chair from the Finance Committee. I do want to just reiterate a little more on the water and, and ask Stephen if, when you were doing your assessment on, on the concerns for water, whether you had taken in consideration that we haven't been at full capacity for, for a while now, that we have wells that are still coming online and that we are in somewhat of a growth phase, a lot of it around water safety, but the town has actually put a bit more into water in the past few years than they have before. And I was just wondering if, in your analysis, that you had considered that there were a few wells offline? Because I think the term exhausting, almost exhausting the supply may be a little misleading in the fact that, you know, we do have a lens. Our access is, is, you know, we've had a couple of times where we've had, gotten low, low water levels and have had some alarms. But again, we have a few other wells that we have got to get online, and we're just waiting for the, again, the state approval on some of the permitting.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Shereen, and I toyed with that language a little bit. I didn't want to be terribly alarmist, but at the same time, we have been getting alarms, as you note. My understanding is, I think the committee's understanding is there's plenty of water in the lens, in the monoderm lens itself, and it's our ability to extract. And how often, how many hours a day are we running our pumping systems? And it's the depletion, I think, is more within a short unit of time rather than kind of a systemic depletion. But nevertheless, I think we, I think we're all on the same page that we need to be mindful of what we have and how we use it, and acknowledging, to your point, that we've got a couple of wells offline that will be coming online or benefiting from, you know, PFAS and iron and manganese extraction, et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks. So, with our, the selectmen, select board has done their goals and objectives and have talked about water and talked about with the chamber, you know, putting a goal that we want to see a vibrant year-round community. And I, I think the Chamber of Commerce is getting that, the new directors, understanding where we're at. The town is budgeting for, you know, we are a seasonal community, so we're not just budgeting for the year-round residents that we have here, but we're budgeting for our visitors, our second homeowners. I think we're kind of having a unique situation. One of the things that I'd encourage is, you know, I'm not sure how you do your evaluations on, you know, the select board setting policy side and, you know, what we've been working on over the last year or so after we've done our goals and objectives, but I'd encourage the, the finance committee to review our meeting minutes for updated information on some of the stuff. I think with the police, we have talked about incentive programs and salaries and have, I think, done a lot to encourage recruitment, and I think we're not the only community on the Cape that is facing these challenges of staffing. Again, we know that it's housing, it's, it's, yeah, it's probably the number-one issue that we're facing. And so, I, I think we don't have a huge, big fix on any of it. I think we, we just keep plugging away and setting our, our goals, the select board's goals and objectives, to be able to get to a point where we can make these recommendations to the town, and hopefully they'll understand where we're coming from. I think that was all I was really going to say. I appreciated your, your, I appreciated your language around the, the CFAL. I thought, you gave me a chuckle, Stephen, when you described it as a ever-moving, a nomadic wandering, and that did give me a chuckle, but we are serious about getting a home for a place of quality for our seniors in town, and we've been doing our due diligence for a number of years, and hopefully this year, we can all be on the same page and we get, get it over the mark and get a, a good facility for them. So, with that, I'm just going to turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Shereen. Anything from you?
No, I, I agreed, especially with respect to the CFAL. I think the, the, you know, again, no detail is presented yet, but I think there's general enthusiasm on the committee to. enthusiasm on the committee to see if we can't put this to bed. Thank you.
Jeff?
Well, Mr. Daniel, it's been a few years here, and this is an excellent report, and I always look forward to your report, your preliminary report. I do appreciate some of the language extraordinarily, some of the diction. I'm not sure everybody got a chance to read this. I also anticipate the annual tongue-lashing on free cash. Not unexpected, and I have a couple.
I don't want to disappoint our audience.
No, no, you would not want to disappoint. But.
You could skip a year now and then.
You could skip next year, but the language, "A more Sisyphean task than our annual cries into the wind about the apparent complete and total indifference of our political class to the near annual dismissal of the towns and the State Department of Revenue's written policy with respect to free cash," quote, unquote.
You're wondering.
Classic. No, that's classic Stephen Daniel.
You're wondering what I really feel?
Yeah. So with respect to free cash, just a couple of comments. I'm not sure the select board during the course of a fiscal year really kind of knows where it's coming from and how it's building or not, and the certification, this is not a, this is, you know, not an excuse or anything, but the certification is after the end of the fiscal year. We really don't know what's cooking during the course of the fiscal year, and, you know, it would be neat to have some kind of insight as to its genesis. So are we really, you know, we get dynamite local revenues, and that certainly assists in building up free cash. And we're getting more turnbacks than we should from the departments, that builds up free cash as well. So I think it's important on an ongoing basis, if we're going to really try to manage this puppy, clearly, it hasn't been acceptable in the past, at least according to the FinCom, if we're really going to manage it, we need to get clearer insight, more near-term insight during the course of the year, otherwise, it's kind of a surprise to us as well, believe it or not. And there's never been any want or inclination to ever build up any kind of war chest to circumvent the will of town meeting ever, to what Dean has said. I think we're in an envious position to have the ability to spend some monies on certain projects without going to the bond market. So anyway, those are my comments on free cash. Perhaps the bump up ought to happen, you know, maybe we're, maybe it shouldn't be three to five, maybe it's five to seven, or seven to nine, or whatever. A lot to say on water. This board in particular has spent a lot of time talking about water, working closely with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and we've talked about revisiting rates. In fact, when we had our budget presentation, we asked folks when they're going to revisit rates, soon. So I think your comments on rates are absolutely spot-on. We need to revisit them. They are low, I think. I think also that the work of folks putting in, or folks installing their own irrigation also has an effect on kind of the revenues, et cetera, and that may have an impact on rates as well. We have had wells offline. 10's been offline, it's been offline too long, we're still trying to free it up and get it back online. Of course, 5 and 8 are going to be in the treatment plan, so we're going to have three more wells, hopefully, in the next six to eight months or so, six to nine months, online. So I think maybe the proof is next summer, I think, to kind of see where we are, and not that we're, we never want to roll the dice, and I always think that, I hearken back to what Bob Dunkinson said about, we, there's enough water in the lens, we've just got to go get it. I mean, I remember that, I understand. Perhaps there's opportunities to drill another well, you know, I'd like to, to be honest, we've talked about it here quite a bit. Chamber of Commerce, I totally understand, I totally want to fund the visiting centers, and I just, I too, kind of scratched my head a little bit about the 20K that was on top of that, what are we getting for, what are we getting bang for our buck there? CFA, love the language there. Growth in town staffing, there wasn't a position that I felt was inappropriate, and I think you guys reached the same conclusion, that every ask was appropriate and we're delivering services in the way they ought to be delivered, so. Totally agree on the short-term rental inspection fee, it ought to go up, ought to be, I think, at least 100 bucks. It's at 50. Could go to a buck 50, but I think 100 bucks kind of is a round number. Totally agree on upgrading the financial system. I think it's, you know, it's a no-brainer. If we, it's really, something really ought to happen if it's not up to snuff. It should help everybody along, including the staff. So anyway, those are my comments. I really do, really do appreciate the comments, I love reading them, I like the language, and I appreciate it. Appreciate the effort of all the Finance Committee. I was on the Finance Committee in the mid-'80s, it got me started in town government a long time ago, and worked really hard. They look at every single line of this budget, and it's really appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to take the opportunity of an open mic, that I will point out that, first of all, we recognize, to Jill's point about the 90 percent cap on local receipts, so we totally get that. I love the suggestion of, let's sort of tuck into what the potential drivers of these overages are. I think that's kind of all we're asking. I don't think, again, there's no nefarious scheme to overtax the residents, but that's the implication of what happens. Right? If we end up with $10 million in free cash, that's a buck on the tax rate, right? If a penny raises $100,000, $110,000, it's a lot of money. I will also, given that you like my language, I said, as we have previously observed, we're fully cognizant that projecting free cash is part art along with a lot of science. So, in our defense, but thank you.
One more comment. Just think of all the delicious free cash and all the return turnbacks and the reduction in the tax rate we'll have when we have paid parking downtown. Thank you very much.
Speaking of open mics, I'm going to try to keep this brief. I appreciate everything you've said. It's very thought-provoking, as is evident from the reactions you've gotten from the other four members of the select board. There's a lot to talk about here. Some of it is axiomatic, some of it is worthy of a lot more discussion. I'm just going to try to be very, very brief and say, you know, with water, just going down the list, with water, it's one of the six goals and objectives. We are focused on it, as Shereen said. I think, and clearly, the pricing is something probably not only needs to be looked at, but it is, as your data suggests, we're underpricing the resource. I would like to say, and this is kind of my pet thing, I think we need to look at, and I know Mr. Brigardis made this comment in the most recent Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, I think we need to look at, can we reduce usage, excuse me, by focusing on irrigation of private homes and encouraging, either through pricing or otherwise, that to go to more to private wells? And I understand that there's a discussion as to whether that draws from the same source of the aquifer as do the municipal draws. That leads me to my bottom line, which is we need to get comprehensive data on all these issues and then make some policy decisions. I do note that we had a consultant in here sometime in the last year, it was very impressive, talking about what we need to do, what we need to be concerned about with respect to our water infrastructure, namely wells, storage, et cetera. So I think it'd be useful to keep that in mind as well. Free cash, for another conversation, I'd like to know which part of it is science. I mean, I don't understand how, you know, you make the forecasts that are in line with appropriate policies, and then you end up with more than, and there are a number of sources for that, I think we all agree on that. Maybe there are some things that can be done on a tighter analysis of where it comes from that would make it more possible to be closer to three to five as opposed to your numbers, 15, 16, whatever, 20. But I, at the end of the day, from my perspective, it may be a problem, but it's a high-class problem. And I say that with all respect to the taxpayers, we'd rather be long than short. Finally, I absolutely, on that subject, I do agree, I don't think anybody's looking to avoid two-thirds votes. It just so happened that it was convenient. It doesn't make sense to insist on what frankly I would regard as somewhat foolish consistency to insist that we have two-thirds votes on things for which we have free cash to fund this year. I think the only other comment I would like, let me just say, with respect to policies, I think that's a great idea. I'd like us to maybe share that with you, that maybe the Finance Committee might be a good starting point for a comprehensive review of finance policies, and/or maybe in conjunction with us, but I think it's a good idea, but it's something that, it's more prophylactic than problem-solving from my perspect, and I think you've agreed with that. Lastly, I'll say about the Crowell Road project, what would we do without a year in which we've got something that everybody has very strong views on, and they're not all in alignment? I, you know, and the Crowell Road project is as good as any. I mean, we've got the, I hope, the CFA behind us, we've got maybe housing behind us a little bit, at least for the time being. We need something to discuss one.
We need something animating for the off-season.
There you go. That's what we need. So I think Jill alerted, she alluded a little bit to some of the countervailing factors. I think we have to take all of that into account when we have that conversation, and I look forward to it, but it's not, to my mind, all one way or the other, notwithstanding the unanimity of your group. So, yeah, go ahead, Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I had neglected one item that Stephen had brought up, and thank you for recognizing me again. On the subject of fees, just as a suggestion with historical perspective, back when I was on the committee, your predecessor, Ken Summer, appointed several subcommittees to look at different issues. I headed up the one on the hotel motel taxi. There was one on fees that never really got anywhere. I don't think there was very much work that was done. Joanne might remember, but it would be, I think, helpful if the Finance Committee wanted to take the first crack at that. But that's your call, much as the chair has just suggested, you might want to take the first crack at the financial policies. But I would certainly appreciate that. They should be looked at, as you point out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of observations. I think, Mike, to your point about all one way or another with respect to Crowell Road, we acknowledge that there are challenges and concerns down there. We're just not sure that kind of the urbanization of that intersection is the optimal outcome. We think there are things that can and should be done to improve safety and egress and access down there. So I don't want you to interpret our stance as all one way or another.
No, I appreciate that.
Because you think there's a good middle ground there somewhere.
Notwithstanding that urbanization is a bit of a pejorative term.
Well, well, we'll talk more about it offline, but.
Jeff, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
And then to Dean, I guess your point about the Finance Committee, or Mike, to your point about the Finance Committee reviewing the financial policies, I would have to defer to Jill, his town manager, as to whether or not she wants her nose in that book right now, or, and then similarly, I suppose, about policy review, you know, fee structure review in general, we're happy to take orders from anybody, but I wouldn't, I don't want to be appropriately.
Yeah, I'd like to come back to that. I have a thought about that, but Jeff, go ahead.
I just have one comment on Crowell Road. I mean, I don't share your vehement opposition, but perhaps I share some well-grounded ambivalence. I want to see what comes back with the 25 percent design and see what we can work out in terms of safety. That's why I voted for it. Thanks.
We look forward to that.
If I may, just on the, I didn't, I was not focused on fees when I made the comment about the Finance Committee looking at financial policy, and that, just a suggestion, I don't think we have to resolve that tonight.
Sure.
My question about fee, yes, if something's been there for 15 years, it probably needs to be updated. Does it provide a service that needs to be self-funding? That's something that ought to be looked at. I agree with that, but I think we do need to recognize fees fundamentally, in terms of the people on whom they fall, or we should look at that, as well as the, just sort of willy-nilly raising them, it is a regressive tax.
Hundred percent.
And, you know, we need to be aware of the impact on the people who are paying those fees, particularly if they are disproportionate to their circumstances, I'll put it, so.
100 percent, we agree with that, and I think that's, of course, one of the concerns about water pricing, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
In the necessity of water pricing.
Yep, yep. And also, by the way, the, why I am, I've sort of agreed to accept the $100 short-term rental increase in fee, but I'd like to see it stay there for that very reason, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, just agreement, that some of these things are very regressive, and we need to be mindful of that in this community, 100 percent.
Okay.
So.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Good, very good report, good discussion, and we look forward to further conversation on all these topics.
Thank you. I apologize if we are rocking anybody's shoe, but that's part of our job.
Maybe a pebble.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well, next we have, if I, let me make sure I have this right, a one-day alcohol license for Holy Redeemer Church, and I think Mr. Weiser is it, is here to tell us about that?
Good evening. So I'm Ron Weiser, I'm representing Holy Redeemer Church, and we're petitioning for a one-day alcohol permit for St. Patrick's Day dinner that we're planning on having in the middle of next month. So we've gone through COVID, the pandemic, we've gone through a year-long renovation of our church, which, in both of those events, have really limited our ability to get together as a community, socially. So we're looking at the, for the St. Patrick's Day opportunities, the first chance to bring all of our community together socially for dinner, and we'd like to serve beer and wine at it as well.
Thank you. Any comments, questions here from the board?
None.
Other than the fact that you're having St. Patrick's Day on the Ides of March? If there are no comments or questions, I'll take that one.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to grant a special one-day alcohol permit to Ron Weiser of Holy Redeemer Church from March 15, 2025, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 57 Highland Outchattan.
A second. A second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good dinner.
Okay.
Enjoy yourselves.
Thank you.
Next is the second read of the grinder pump policy, and do you want to kind of give us an intro, Mr. Failey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So after, two weeks ago, at our last, the last select board meeting, we brought back the, we convened with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and they proposed some recommendations. Basically, to summarize, I believe, they were in support of it. They did have some additional comments, and they had some additional information that they wanted to be part of the recommendation, but I believe that's in your packet.
It is in the packet, and I think, I would say, I do want to take note particularly of the suggestion that we, as we go forward, take up some sort of a policy discussion around supporting folks for whom the cost of connecting is an unbearable burden, or an unsustainable burden. I know Shereen mentioned that in one of our discussions. I support it, and so I appreciate that coming from the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. I also note the whole question of maintenance, which I'm, we should take up promptly as a separate follow-on discussion, but I think that's, we recognize that that can't drag. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you're going to open it for other comment, but I wanted to make two comments, one to follow up on something you just said. But first, in the actual recommendations, recommendation number one, acquisition and provision, where it refers to the elevation challenges, I would like to insert the phrase "or distance," elevation or distance challenges. I think that appears somewhere else. I had mentioned that last time, and I'm fully supportive of those recommendations, and as was the Water and Sewer Committees. I think that's important for the record. With respect to assistance, and you're correct, Mr. Chairman, Shereen has mentioned this several times. There was a vote taken by the Water and Sewer Committee on February 10. There was a vote taken by the Water and Sewer Committee on February 10th to recommend the creation of a sewer connection hardship program, and I'd like to offer a motion on that, in that respect, after we deal with the main motion, because I think it's something we should move forward with. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Jeff?
Very much in favor, I would move approval.
And, and I'm going to second it. I would like to just note, for our future discussion, and before we actually vote, I think since we've invited comment from the public, we ought to hear from them, but in the, the articles that we'll take up a little bit later, I want to note that the, the policy that we have here, under, under consideration, and theoretically that we may approve here momentarily, includes the stipend, the, for, for insta, $2,000 stipend for installation, and I think there's some places in the, the warrant materials where that fact needs to be added. I'll bring those up when we get to them, but I want to bring that to everybody's attention. And Dean, your, your, or distance suggestion also finds its way into other, other stuff that will come up later. Ms. Gibbs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are kind of random because I didn't know we were going to, pardon me, be allowed to speak. I know while apparently it is within the purview of the Select Board to approve a policy without going to town meeting, when a policy like this has such significant long-term financial implications, in this case for 30 years, it seems to me it should be brought to town meeting for a vote. I mean, a lot of policies are put in place, but they don't have serious implications. I've previously expressed my concerns about this being one small piece that favors a particular group over everyone else, and I think that's inappropriate. Right now, we only know what it is for two years, but the fact that it's being carried out until 2055 is amazing to me because we still don't have a handle on how long it's going to take to sewer the town. We should have had two-thirds of the town connected by 2030. We only have 700 out of 5,200 homes connected, and all of those people have, you know, financial considerations. For every, it goes back to this, the fact that Chatham is considered a wealthy community, and looking at, you know, the financials for every, there are three thou, out of our 6,200 residences, half of those are summer residences, and those people can likely afford to, to do things, but the other third, half of the community are on fixed incomes, and they have to pay for this. And I would venture to guess that many of those will never get sewored, and they've been paying for the sewer for a long period of time, since 2012, when we first broke ground. So I, I, I would like this to, and I know it's not going to happen, but I, I think the town should get an explanation, because a lot of people don't listen to this, and they're not going to understand what it means. And I'll speak later when we actually talk about that part of the water and sewer budget. But I, I think that, you know, and just to talk about free cash, you know, I got a real problem with that in that we appropriated that money requiring a two-thirds vote on, on something, whether it was employees or a project, and then the money ends up not getting used, but it requires two-thirds, and when it becomes free cash, which is a misnomer, it only requires a majority vote. And therefore, I think that we've got to get a lot better at doing zero-based budgeting, because that's why we end up with so much free cash. We're not doing it. We're not looking hard at the expenses we really need each year so that we don't end up with a lot of free cash at the end. You know, it's a wish list, and that's how we get so much free cash. So those are my only comments on this, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? So do we have a motion on?
I moved approval.
Yeah, you moved approval, and, okay.
I did too.
Sorry?
I, I think Shereen also seconded it.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciated Ms. Gibbs' comments on, on the equity part of, of the, you know, searing the town, but what I look at it from a perspective of, that we're paying, you know, we are paying, and we may not have sewer in our neighborhood, but the environmental benefit to the entire community has got to have some value and weight in the project, and I just want to make sure that I mention that and, and put it out there for consideration. I also wanted to say that I'm really supportive of, of Dean's recommendation, or Dean's wanting to make a motion from the Water and Sewer Recommendation to do a sewer connection hardship program. So I just wanted to just, just say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I saw another hand go up. Maybe not. Is there anybody else?
Mine is up again. It's Elaine Gibbs. I just have one more comment, because I absolutely agree with the needs-based program that has been developed. I think that's really important, and I think as an alternative to the grinder pump policy, that that's what you do for everyone in town. Anybody who needs, has any problems with affording it could take advantage of that, and that would include people on grinder pumps. So I, I think that that should replace what you're, you're thinking about with the grinder pump policy. I meant to mention that, and I didn't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'm, I'm going to call the roll here. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And, and I'll, you go ahead and make the motion. I, I do want to give credit for, to Ms. Aikman of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, who I believe made the motion in, in, in that, in that committee meeting. So go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board direct the town manager and staff to review and provide a recommendation to the Select Board on the feasibility of establishing a Chatham Sewer Assistance Program as recommended by the Water and Sewer Committee. And I'll say, it's not as part of the motion, that the assistance to be considered should not be limited to grinder pump situations, but to anyone that is obligated to connect to the sewer.
Yes, agreed.
So that's the motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Yep.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Dyken?
Resoundingly so. Aye.
Yes, indeed. Thanks very much to everyone. Everyone who put that all together, contributed, worked on it over several years, and now we have the maintenance policy to look forward discussing. Next is the license to enter and use real property at 608-610 Stage Harbor Road. Is that, whom do we have to help us with that? Is it, is that you, Rob, or is that you, Jill, or?
It's Kathy.
Kathy?
Kathy Flea.
Please.
Unfortunately, it seems that the representative isn't available, but the town received, there's, there's two parts to this item. The first is a little background history, that the town received a request for an easement to run natural gas to the Old Mill Boatyard Pump Station located at 608-610 Stage Harbor Road. That item must go before town meeting for approval, therefore, in the meantime, the board is asked to consider granting a license to enter and use real property executed by the town manager, if approved, for that same use, so that there's time for it to go, for the work to be completed, and that pump station to be brought online, and then town meeting can then approve the easement if it so desires. Town Council has reviewed both the license and the easement that was drafted by what is listed as the Boston Gas Company, but is also the Natural Gas Company, National Grid.
National Grid.
So that is, Boston Gas Company is the same as National Grid, which is why it's listed as that. The comments from Town Council, unfortunately, National Grid provided it only as a PDF, so Town Council's comments are the handwritten notes that you see in both of those documents, but he did not see any issue with, other than what he noted in those.
So I, I'm going to leap to the fore here with, first of all, you, you, I, you mentioned this is to be signed by the town manager, but the signature page says by the Select Board of the.
It's up to you if you want to sign it, or if you want to have the town manager, it's, it's, either way, we can have that page changed by the gas company if, if needed.
Okay, my second question is, the, have, has Boston Gas and/or National Grid seen Mr. Talaman's comments? Do we know that they're acceptable?
They were sent, I haven't heard back, but if approved, I can ask them to review, or we can come back at the next. I know this was a little time-sensitive, which is why it is before you like this. I, like I said, I haven't heard back from Boston Gas Company on this yet, so I don't have an answer to that at this time.
I, I'm just, I mean, I'll, I, I don't want to make it more difficult, and I'd invite Dean or Jeff or anybody else to comment. Two issues I have are, one, is this sufficiently, is the, the license sufficiently reliable from the Boston Gas point of view for them to actually invest money when town meeting may say, no thanks? And then, secondly, you know, the question is, you know, what does happen to the license if town meeting says, no thanks? And then, of course, there's the issue whether they are willing to accept the changes. Ideally, we would not, I mean, we can approve this informed, subject to the Council working out the details, but I, signing it today would, in my mind, not be, be prudent.
So to your point about the license, Boston Gas Company is aware that, I mean, obviously, they drafted the license, so they did ask that we let them know if, when it is placed on the town meeting warrant. That was kind of one of their stipulations in terms of approval of the license. My understanding, and the town manager can correct me, but my understanding is the license, if this does, if the easement does not pass at town meeting, the license remains as a license, correct?
It, it very well could, and, and just a reminder, this is for providing service to town property, so.
I, I, I understand, but I'm.
And we've done it, and, and so there is some risk to town meeting, as any town meeting article might be. We fashioned the article on the last page, one that was signed a, a few years ago.
I believe it was 2016 was the last time we had, yeah, an easement granted, so that's what the article was based off of or drafted from.
And so we did that before we had a license, so the license is revocable, and.
Well, that's what we say. I think there's someplace where the Boston Gas people said it was irrevocable. I, maybe I was imagining that, but I, I thought that it said that it was not subject to revocation, which is one of the reasons why I asked the question I asked.
I'm looking at what Town Council had crossed out. We can certainly put this in our form of license and come back to the board, if you want to feel more comfortable about it.
I, I guess to try to move this along, I would propose that we approve this, subject to the, the final approval of Town Council, and obviously Boston Gas, but, you know, because if they don't approve it, they won't sign it. But, but subject to approval, I don't know how you feel about that, Dean, but.
I, I, well, I'll comment on that in a second. I had the same recollection that you did, and I think it's the easement that lasts forever because it uses the word forever in the first paragraph, grants to, now I've lost the word.
No, I have no problem.
It's in the second paragraph.
The easement being.
It's the, the license, and I assume these were Town Council edits that are in typewritten form on the third page. It says on paragraph 11th, revocable at the discretion of the licensed sewer, that's us. What we could do is approve these, either according to the condition that you gave, or we could say, we're approving them based on, on the basis of the language that's in front of us, and if they don't like it, they'll have to come back and we'll, we'll change it.
And I'm, I'm, we can do that. I was trying to give a little more flexibility. If Town Council approves anything that amends what we're approving here, that's okay with us.
Yeah.
Would be my approach here.
That's fine with me.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I was going to say, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, Shereen?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Next, I believe, is the General Government and Other Undesignated portion of the 26th Operating Budget. Carrie, do you want to, are you, are you up on that, or who's that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Carrie Mazerol, Finance Director. Okay, so, General Government and Other Undesignated, the FY 2026 budget presentation. Let's see if I have control of this mouse. So as you are aware, I went over a few of these things at the beginning when we did the budgets during the Budget Summit and in January, when I was presenting the estimated proposed budget. So we're going to be going over General Government, which is 6% of the budget, the Debt Service, which is 14% of the budget, Undistributed Insurance and Reserve Fund, which is 2% of the budget, and Employee Benefits at 11% of the budget. General Government consists of 10 departments, four other and two committees. We've got the Select Board, Town Manager, Human Resources, Accounting, Assessing, Treasure Collector, IT, Town Clerk, Elections, and the Sticker Permit Office. We also have the Town Moderator, Legal, Audit, Parking Clerk, Summer Residence Advisory Committee, and the Finance Committee. So the budget for FY 2026 for the General Government is $3,546,470, up $126,695, or 3.7% from 2025. Personnel Services have increased $122,000, and operational expenses have increased only So salary line increases are due to contractual increases, step increases in longevity increases. Town Manager's Department increased $16,460 in salaries. Human Resources increased $8,076. Accounting Division increased $83,692, and I will go over that in a few slides. Assessing Division increased $11,616. Treasure Collector Division increased $10,475. IT, $19,222. Town Clerk, $6,619. Elections went down, $8,607, and the Sticker Permit Office also went down by $25,508. Increases by department, Select Board, $1,050. Town Manager increased $5,800. Human Resources increased $2,400. Accounting Division increased $1,300. Assessing Division increased $1,450. IT Division increased $7,750. Elections went down, $28,500, and the Sticker Permit Office increased $13,400.
Can I just?
Yep.
The, the elections, the 20, is that because of the, the special town meeting last year?
Yep. No, 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 no. It has to do with all the elections in 2025 that we had, but I'll go over that in the next slide, but that's mainly what it is, it's just, yeah, the president.
Oh, okay, all right. I got it.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks. I got it, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. Stickers, the sticking, sticker office? Are we, are we booking up staff there, expanding hours, weekend hours?
Yeah, so I'll be going over that also.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. So these are the departments that were level funded for FY 2026. We have the Town Moderator at $1,250, Finance Committee at $2,600, Legal at $235, Audit at $65,000, Summer Resident Advisory Committee at $2,000, and Parking Clerk at $8,500. There are no operation, operational expense increases. There are no operation, operational expense increases for treasure collector or the town clerk.
Can I, this is not a budget question, but I look at the legal and I remember looking at that number when we retained new town council. Have we had any expenses that have fallen outside of our basic advisory agreement with them?
No, we haven't.
Okay, thank you.
So the select board budget for 2026 is $24,050. Salaries are at $21,000 and expenses are at $3,050. The operating expenses are increasing $1,050, and that's for advertising for $1,000 and office supplies for 50. And those are just due to increases that we've been incurring and seeing over the past couple of years.
One is tempted to ask what we're advertising to select board.
All of your public hearings that you have.
Oh, public, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Town manager budget is at $643,200. Salaries are at $421,950. Expenses are $221,250. The operating expenses are increasing $5,800. Again, just operational increases to advertising. We're moving from printing to postage, just, just in the line item, so that's a net difference. And then we have office supplies, which we've seen increases for, and meetings dues and travel, $550. And that's just for increases for, that we've seen in dues and meetings and, you know, the travel over the past couple of years. Human resource budget is at $234,556. Salaries are at $204, $206, and expenses at $30,350. Operational expenses are increasing $2,400. We started the employee engagement in this current fiscal year in FY 2025, and we set the limit at like, I think it was $750. So being the first year, we've seen the chili cook-off, we've seen, what are their items that do they have?
So they've had movie night, so the.
Oh, yeah, the movie night.
Itself is not receiving any additional money or bonuses. It's, we had to rent the BFW, who in turn then had donated the rental for that. So most of it has been funded by me, and so with the committee being more zealous and, and more organized, there's a lot of events coming up, so we thought that having a $3,000 budget for supplies and trophies or whatever is needed for employee engagement was a good investment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Contracted services, advertising, and office supplies. The advertising is just moving $250 to the office supplies line, and contracted services is up just a little bit, $150. The accounting budget is at $403,024. Salaries have increased $83,692 in FY 2026 compared to 2025, and I'll go over that in the next slide. Operational expenses increases are $1,300, and this is for continuing education and meetings dues and travel for the employees to be able to go and have professional growth. And just we're seeing the meetings dues and travel again increase. But this is more so for continuing education for all of our employees in accounting to be able to attend. So in the accounting office, I think there's been a little bit of talk about this position. But there's a position, the finance administrative position, that's been posted in FY 2025. And what we did was reallocate funds from the conservation department. And the conservation department assistant of $57,200, and the sticker office lead position in the amount of $25,956 to the accounting office for this position. The conservation department assistant was not filled the past couple of years, so. And then the sticker office lead position, we just found a need that there was more of a manager type position needed in that office to oversee the staff and kind of take the, you know, more of a management role that is needed in that office. So this is a split position that is half the year in the sticker office and half the year in finance to help with budgeting and day-to-day activities, maybe reconciling and kind of digging more into the budget. Like we were kind of having that conversation just a little while ago about looking further into expenses and revenues and stuff. This position could help do things like that and also help with the budgeting software as well. Do you have any more questions on, no questions, okay. The assessing budget is at $361,434. Salaries are at $272,834 and expenses at $88,600. Operating expense increases are $1,450. Again, another department that's asking for increases in continuing education and meetings dues and travel. I think this is kind of across the board in a lot of the departments. Advertising went down $100 and purchase of services is up $50. The IT budget is at $965,872, at salaries at $458,122 and expenses at $507,750. Operating expense increases are $7,750. Again, we're seeing the increases here with meeting dues and travel, $1,250, and continuing education for $2,000. Office supplies are up $500. Operational supplies, again, I think that's a typo, $2,000. Professional consulting up $2,000.
Carrie, question. Was this segment of the budget, of this section of the budget, developed off of a request that came from the head of IT?
Yes.
And, and off the top of your head, do you have any sense of what the, how much was requested as opposed to the 965 that we're looking at?
You mean the $7,750?
No, I, I mean, I'm going to assume, actually, I shouldn't have focused on 965. I'm going to assume the 458,000 of salaries is pretty much dictated by.
The contractual, yes.
Contractual agreements. So I'm focused, what I should have said was the 507 is what you have here. How much, if you know or if you recall, how much was actually requested?
By the department head? I believe it was more like five, what happened there? Craig is on here, but I believe it was 500 and maybe 40? Hi Craig, do you remember how much you actually requested?
Yeah, I think I requested 540,000, and that is generally because we, we pay for all the licensing agreements for all the softwares throughout town. And in general, licensing agreements, they don't tend to go up at general municipal rates of 3%. They tend to go up anywhere from 5% to 10%. For example, our Microsoft licensing went up about 8% last year, so it was just an increase. We'll be able to move some funds around to meet the budget for this year.
Okay, the thrust, the thrust of my question really was, it starts with assumption that this, you know, this section of the budget could do a whole lot with a lot more money. And we have to be, how do I say it, we have to be economical. But I was just wondering the extent to which the, you know, the ultimate decision on being economical, how that related to the so-called wish list. And I think it's good to hear that it's pretty close. So from my perspective, that's a good answer.
Yeah, I would agree. We, we are moving, we are transitioning some softwares over and consolidating. So we, we're hoping to see no increase or not a substantial increase by consolidation of softwares as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. The elections budget is at $57,778. Temporary wages are $7,668 and expenses are at $50,110. The temporary wages decreased $8,607 and operating expenses have decreased $28,500. And that is, again, that's due to the elections in FY 2025 and not so many in 2026. The sticker permit office budget is at $68,162. Salaries are at $31,312 and expenses at $36,850. Again, the salaries are decreased 25, 508. That goes back to the accounting department, just reallocating the funds. And the operating expenses increased $13,400. And the operational supplies increased alone, $13,000, and that's due to Civic Plus, a software that we have, that we, a company that we use. And the purchase of stickers have increased as well, so those, that's for that line item. Office supplies increased $1,000. This would be for any operational supplies that the new employee would need. We want them to kind of go through the office and look around and see if there's any additional stuff that they need or want. Uniforms, I decreased that line by $200. I don't think the department really needs uniforms, so I took that out. Meetings dues and travel, I reduced that by $400. I, by increasing the accounting office budget, I reduced this one. And I don't think they're going to be going to meetings dues and travel, any of the seasonal employees. So I left $100 in here just for any around the town driving, going back and forth from here to the town hall. That's pretty much, that's, any questions on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. The library assessments for FY 2026 are at $714,244. Eldridge Public Library, their proposed budget increased 3.5% within an assessment of $701,244. And the South Chatham Library's proposed assessment for 2026 is $13,000, which reflects a $1,000 increase compared to 2025. Other departments' budgets, the veterans services is at $129,908 for FY 2026. $30,722 increase to the veterans' benefits in 2026 over 2025. The assessment for 2026 is $69,908, and the veterans' benefits is at $60,000. Just a little bit about this, last year, when I did the budget for FY 2025, they started paying out more for benefits and stuff for surviving spouses and veterans themselves from this benefits line. So I'm going to be asking for a supplemental at town meeting for the veterans' benefits. But just over the past few years, this line has increased due to the, just to the requests of the benefits itself, not necessarily the assessment, but just the benefits in general that they get. They get a lot of medical and stuff like that, help paid for, that they can't afford. So that's why that's, you're seeing that increase.
Carrie oversees, excuse me, Carrie?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Who oversees that program? Is it, is it, is the COA that oversees?
So it's a regional, I believe, program, so.
Cape Vets? So it goes to the Cape Cod veterans?
Yes, it does. Yeah, but these in particular, I think the ASF is just for Chatham, like.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please. We pay an assessment to the regional.
Correct.
I think it's headed in Harwich, but we also pay $60,000 directly as benefits to our veterans.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Carrie, did you say you're going to have a supplemental at town meeting for this as well?
I am, yeah, it's probably.
Is this from last year, you mean?
For this current fiscal year.
For this current fiscal year. What's that amount?
It's probably around $20,000, $25,000.
So is that one of the reasons why you bumped it up as well for next?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Public ceremonies, $21,000 for FY 2026. This is actually a $2,000 decrease. They have, they haven't been spending that much, so we reduced their line item by $2,000. It's not a lot of money. Other public events, Chatham Band, that's level funded at $10,000. And then the railroad museum is requesting $5,000. So employee benefits budgeted at $7,086,118 for 2026. The increase of $825,925 compared to 2025. Workers' comp is at $130,000, up $5,000. Medicare employer share is at $240,000, up $40,000. Police fire injury, $27,225, up $2,475. Retirement assessment is $3,114,947, up $369,765. And health insurance is $3,543,946, up $40,685. So all of these, the only change on here compared to the proposed budget is the retirement assessment. We received that maybe a few weeks ago. So I think my original was like 2.8 or something like that. I can't really exactly remember the exact figure. But we received their assessment and it's at $3,114,947. A lot of this on here is due to increases in staff, increases of their salaries and their compensation. The more that we pay, the more we're going to have to pay out for Medicare employer share. And also the retirement assessment is based on that as well. The health insurance is the same as the proposed. The health insurance rate came in, increase came in at 6.5 for Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, but we also have Medicare that we pay for, which was a percentage increase between 12 and 24%. We also pay for dental out of this fund. And then for FY 2026, we'll have all of our employees on the 70% share. So this is just taking into consideration all of our employees that we currently have that are taking health insurance.
The workers' comp, is that just a retroactive experience rating?
Yes, yeah, it's just a rate increase that we get from the company, Maya, so.
But it's based on actual experience, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
You have an annual audit on workers' comp?
We do have an annual audit on workers' comp, but actually, we just had one, so.
And then Carrie, the Medicare employer share, that's strictly because of the increase in FTEs?
It's based on what our salaries are for the year, so it's the 1.45%.
Yeah, got it, I got it, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Big number.
I know.
$826,000 increase, anyway. Insurance is unreal. Thanks.
Yeah, that's one of the largest things that have increased besides salaries. Undistributed insurance, the insurance budget for 2026 is $1,122,835, an increase of $144,959, which is just about a 15%. an increase of a hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine, which is just about a fifteen percent increase. When I talked to the insurance company, they said they were increasing their rates based around fifteen to twenty percent. So I just went with a fifteen percent across the board. So we get our insurance wholesale, and it's also based on what's going on in, in other states and stuff. As you know, we've had a lot of disasters happen too, so our rates seem to be increasing a lot based on that. The reserve fund for FY twenty twenty six is level funded again at a hundred thousand dollars. This is for unforeseen expenditures that come across.
This is the fund.
This is the Finance Committee's fund.
The Finance Committee gets to approve these unanticipated expenditures with the town manager. I don't think those go back to the Select Board. Do they vote?
No, they don't. So we did use this last year for our insurance. We didn't use the whole fund, but we were approved some money from them. The FY twenty twenty six debt budget is at eight million, five hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars, and this hasn't changed at all. The principal is at six million, eight hundred and two, one sixty three, and the interest is at one million, six hundred and twenty four, sixty four. And the short-term interests are interest and short-term, they're short-term borrowings. Or we also use this amount to pay for the costs and fees that are associated with borrowing at the end of the year. I take it nobody has any questions. So I'll get into the capital. So the town manager's request for twenty twenty six is consulting and engineering. This is an annual request of a hundred thousand dollars. So this is just a line item that we use to, for townwide expenditures on engineering and consulting costs. These are IT requests. Craig, do you wanna talk about your?
Yeah, I can talk about that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So IT, we, we had a large number of capital requests. A lot of this is just maintenance of some, annual ongoing maintenance of our infrastructure. For example, I'll start with the annual cameras. As you know, we have about a hundred and fifty cameras around town. The oldest building that we have cameras in is a community center, and that is, they've been online since the building was actually built. So we, we need to upgrade those cameras. So this fund is to, is to start to put all the cameras on a five-year plan. Cameras range in price depending on what we're looking at, anywhere from six hundred to about a thousand. So we're hoping to replace, you know, put, start to put the cameras on a five-year cycle, and we'll start to do those as we move through the town, as buildings get older and we need to update them. The same is with the annual request for access controls. We have cards that we access the buildings with. These cards, the doors are the bigger concern. For example, the annex building, they had bar strikes and, and the doors need to, without replacing the whole door, we need to replace the mechanism for the control card. So this will be beginning the process of starting to replace those doors. We have probably about fifty to sixty doors around town that do have strikes and require this type of hardware, and we need to start to, to upgrade those annually. Chatham TV equipment, that's just a relatively standard request for the Chatham TV department. This goes towards purchasing hardware, anything else they need, small, non-large items that Mark may need. The next one's a financial management system. Stephen Daniel had, we are looking, this would begin phase one of the project, which would be a new chart of accounts. I think Carrie can go into that a little bit more after I kind of give you an overview. A new chart of accounts and to get the general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivables, and the tax and assessing modules up and running. What I'd done is I went out and I found the most expensive software, and I've kind of based the process, the, the purchasing of this process without going out and getting multiple bids, based upon the number that I got for the most expensive software. Carrie, do you wanna comment on the chart of accounts?
Yeah, so I can just speak about it a little bit. So our current financial software is just about almost twenty years old now. It's built on Microsoft Access, so it, it, when you run reports, it's, it's slower than some other systems that I've, I've used, or even compared to ClearGov that we use right now for our budgeting. It's inefficient, it has limited functionality. The reporting, I know that you guys are already in favor for this, but, and Stephen already had it in his report, so I'll just kind of be brief. But the reporting is very limited as well. So when you have to, when you run a report, you have to run it year by year. You can't run it from multiple years. So also, there's integration challenges with the software that we currently have. And I'd like to be able to just have something that collaborates better with all of the departments. And I just want something that's, you know, I think we all want something that's more efficient in town to be able to use. But anyways, that's for the financial software.
Just a quick question. Not details, but how, how flexible will it be to transition, create a bridge so that we still have some retention and ability to do comparative analysis with prior years under the old system?
So it's gonna take a while to get onto something new. Like Craig was saying, we have to build a new chart of accounts. We're gonna have to put together a team and kind of like go through and figure out what software we wanna use first, because there's, there's, it is limited to what we, there is available for municipal financial softwares. There's probably only three or four that I can think of, and the one that we already have is one of the, one, one of them. So as far as a bridge.
I can also comment, Carrie.
Go ahead.
I can also comment on some of this too.
Okay.
Generally, what happens is there's a large migration process, which takes the data. On previous implementations I've done, we've brought over anywhere from ten to seven years worth of historical data off the old system. And then the vendor will come up with a process so that we can still gather the other historical data at any point in time. So that, that's one of the big, larger parts of the project, is migrating the data over so that we can run, you know, up to possibly, you know, as minimal as seven years of historical data in one conversion. So that, that part of the, the data migration and the process.
That answers the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff? Yeah, I just quickly, RFP this year, you think, or, and, and is the current vendor gonna be, gonna be one of the candidates, you think? No, okay. So you're, you're down to three, okay. But you think you're gonna get an RFP out this year? Is that, is that the plan or not?
If, if it's not this year, it would be early next year. The, the chart of accounts, it's kind of like when you are putting together regulations. You, you look to make sure your house is in order and everything interacts with each other. So we have a, a chart of accounts that's been, it's been fine for us, but we need to expand it in a way that we're able to track annual town meeting warrants, say, per se, for a project. The, the towns typically recycle some of the account numbers, and we're finding it's just too constricting, and, and we're not getting good data. There's, there's, there's no data flaws for us to do our analysis. So chart of accounts is probably gonna take about a year and a half to get done. And hoping to get, we'll do another set of funding requests for next year through the capital program, and hopefully as soon as possible. The, the system we have now is, is just becoming web-based, and, and so some of the limitations there don't really provide us any kind of growth in the future.
Totally get it, and it's probably overdue. So this, this is teeing it up. This is doing planning dollars or whatever, or trying to do some planning here, and.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with these efforts. They're lengthy, involved, and take a lot of close attention and management. My T and operations and financial operations, but anyway. Okay, have fun.
Craig, you have more, a couple more.
Yep. So our next request is for GIS migration. Currently, we are using a software called PeopleForms. We've made the commitment to move to an Esri platform, which was a pretty, a pretty high-level type of GIS software. Just for informational purpose, GIS software provides us, basically takes a map of the town and it just integrates layers into it. And those layers can be water, sewer, sidewalks, any infrastructure assets. It would pretty much be anything that you, that, that you can build into it realistically. Public Works uses it for their streets, sidewalks, water and sewer infrastructure. For example, when the guys get a call out to do a dig save, they will look on the GIS system, they'll look at the parcel address and tell you, tell them the information about the property. They'll also look at the, the laterals which come off the main waterline and any sewer waterlines, and they go out and mark them, and they can actually see it. The accuracy is generally sub-meter, so within three feet ballpark. So we're migrating off this software over to a new software, and the larger portion of this is to get assistance from a company to help build out these maps. And then our GIS coordinator will maintain the maps and also build upon that, all the layers that we require in town. And we do have a lot of layers in town. Yeah, as I say, anything from conservation land, waterfront infrastructure, private roads, easements, everything is in the system. This money is to help us build it out and make it more accessible to our staff and build out some maps for the general public. Land Management Assessment GIS, this is the, an annual fund. This is where we take the money for all of these land-based mapping and anything infrastructure that needs to go into our GIS system. We purchase some hardware to do some planometric mapping, where we'll actually go out in the field and we'll, we'll plot a point out in the field. For example, we're doing hydrants right now. We have a few hydrants that aren't on our GIS layers. They'd be the, they'd be the comeback online, or they, they have been updated. That'll be to, you know, we use this account when we need to, to purchase hardware and additional softwares to do that process. Network upgrade of equipment, this is our, this is primarily in our, it's actually solely in the water pollution control facility. As you know, that went online pre-me coming to town, so it's been at least twelve years, if not fifteen. And some of the network hardware needs to be updated, these switches that control all the traffic that comes from the SCADA system, which is the monitoring system within the buildings. We are upgrading as a large purchase that we did last year, the servers, so that, this is all part of the next phase of, of updating all the network there. Generally, we like to run the network at that specific place for about seven years, and it really becomes end of life, anywhere from five to seven years. So this is to upgrade those switches. Studio hardware upgrade, this is for the Chatham TV. This will be upgrading the, all the boards and any infrastructure needed for, for Mark and Brianna at the, at the studio. This is funded from PEG funds. So we, it, it is time to stay on top of this infrastructure, and we're trying to get that updated. And then town computer technology, this is our annual purchase of trying to keep our things like printers, laptops, some of our infrastructure switches that control the traffic around town. This is where we purchase that equipment out of, generally, as I say, anywhere from three to five years. Some staff members require a little, an upgrade in three years. Some staff members require them in five. A desktop at the sticker office doesn't need to be upgraded every three years, but it should be upgraded every five years. But that's the total of all of our capital requests. If there's any questions, then I can answer for it.
I think they're good. Thank you, Craig. I appreciate it.
Awesome.
Thanks, Greg.
Yep, thank you.
And the last thing on here is the FY twenty twenty six capital warrant article request for OPEB liability trust fund appropriation. This is the article. It's an annual article every year for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be transferred this year. Last year, we took it from stabilization and funded it that way, but this year, we're gonna go back to the overlay surplus and fund it that way. It was approved by the Board of Assessors for this. So do you guys have any questions on the OPEB?
Then I guess we'll take a motion to place.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Move to place? Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Dykens.
Aye. Would you recommend second?
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Okay.
So that was the end of all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Who is up next?
I think Terry and C Fal. I guess Terry, it's you, or is anybody online?
We do have Leah online.
She is online, okay. So this one, just noting that public comment will be accepted. Yes, sir, welcome.
Great, thank you, Terry Wellin, Projects and Operations Administrator. And basically here tonight, following up on our multiple meetings in January, closing in on putting a, or requesting placement and support for a warrant article. As you may recall, in the previous, well, in the staff report, we were charged to go back and look at the overall total project budget number. We looked into that. In the staff report, have laid out multiple items that we looked at for review and consideration with some of the concerns that were raised and some additional considerations when we drilled down, looking at it in the context of the schedule and other concerns with bidding as, as we move forward. So what I'm gonna do, and maybe just in interest of time, I'm gonna pull up the, the revised budget for the benefit of the public as well to point out some changes that we're proposing here to the budget. If remember, we had a budget, it was around four point four million. Now, with the new revised contingencies, we looked at some scheduling concerns, some potential areas in the market where there might be some challenges. So on, on this sheet, that basically we looked at expanding a couple of the contingency line items. So for the broader project construction, we have increased the project contingency, and this is really to, to get at some of the concerns that were raised about challenges in the marketplace. So that would go from ten percent to twelve and a half percent. And then also a design contingency increase here as well from two point, adding another two point five percent on top of the five percent. And that would bump up that number for the, the modifier and escalator. the modifier and escalation project, excuse me, there. Um, and then we also looked at, in a little more detail, the, the values that we were carrying for the uh, temporary relocation. So we broke out those numbers. I think I mentioned it at the previous presentation, that we had um, some numbers in there um, co-mingled with uh, other furniture furnishings and um, the I T equipment. So we've broken that out and also added another fifty thousand dollars to account for uh, the desire to rent trailers, um, and some of the other concerns with, that were discussed at, at the previous meeting. And then also due to some of the potential challenges, we also bumped up the contingency for the soft costs as well, another two and a half percent for uh, some of the items um, that are outlined in the report. And, and I don't know if I want to defer to the town manager, but we did talk this morning about um, the, the, the schedule and moving forward. We did look at, and I think we mentioned this previously as well, uh, this is a tight constructions, uh, both bidding construction schedule. Um, and this is going to be basically our recommended approach here. I know in the staff report, I laid out an alternate uh, to potentially address some, some concerns, but this, but really the baseline overview uh, overview schedule here is our proposed recommendation. And as we did talk about previously, uh, basically is uh, soon after, if we have a project, in the sense that um, the board will place it um, on the warrant, we'll start continuing our, or, or, excuse me, initiating our um, procurement for the designer and the O P M, so that we can get out in front of this and meet this, meet this schedule. Uh, as you can see, again, it's pretty tight and obviously dependent upon the um, outcome at town meeting, but using the free cash article, we'll have the um, funding available to jump right into um, finalizing the design and getting this bid um, and under construction as soon as possible.
Comments, questions?
I just.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think it looks great. I think the increases to contingencies make sense, Terry and Jill, but I, I was confused by the two different um, timelines. So if you just go through that for a second, thanks.
So the, the timeline that, that Terry has before you is going out to bid uh, in July of two thousand twenty-five. And the other timeline that he included in the report has a January two thousand twenty-six uh, bid date. So uh, what we talked about today was, you know, how, how to catch the eye of potential contractors. We were concerned maybe that they would be very busy in the summer and, and maybe not have the capacity to offer a bid. I'm not really that concerned about it. It's, it's not a new bid. It's not, not a new building. And so um, with the projected cost or the allocation of funding of five million dollars, I think with our contingencies, we could do it. Uh, one of the other things too is if we push it out to the January two thousand twenty-six, that means it's a whole nother um, or a later cycle of getting into the building itself, and that presents some challenges with the community center, although Leah and Amy have done a really good job of coordinating that. I think where we look at the contingencies is probably, we don't have a, we're still looking at a, a design concept. And if we could uh, possibly invest sooner than later, but understanding town meeting needs to approve the funds into our site engineering, I think that's the area that has more unknowns to us, so that if we can figure out the, the traffic pattern, the parking, i- if we can do that and we have some available funds, and again, talking to the board about your comfort level with investing in that before town meeting, I think that would provide us more comfort in being able to get the bids out. Or if we need to do an add alternate for some of the items, we talked about some available grant funding that we currently have, possibly go towards maybe the elevator project. So again, a lot of it is within the existing building itself that wouldn't be renovated, but potentially a better site design, no matter what, would benefit um, the facility, e- even if it failed for town meeting. So um, I'm not sure if there was anything else, Terry, we talked about.
No, and I think one of the other potential challenges with the alternate schedule would be also exposing for additional escalation too, for, you know, pushing back the project a year, and Jill already touched upon the temporary relocation aspects as well, making it kind of, we, we, again, our discussion this morning is keep the momentum going and, and again, work closely with the O P M and the designers to um, get out there and shake the trees that the project is coming, so that, it, it's just that this is, you know, typically we're bid, we're bidding on our larger projects in the winter as people lining up work. But again, we're, we're comfortable with the, the baseline schedule and with the caveats that Jill just mentioned.
Sorry, Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Jill, you and I talked about this today. I just wanted to clarify this on the record. So if we were to um, give the okay tonight to a warrant article, um, you, uh, on the accelerated schedule, that, that's the one you're recommending?
Yes.
And, and the, the article itself, the explanation, I think is going to have to be adjusted to reflect that because it was a little confusing. Um, in addition to the site work, you, which you would commence immediately, I guess you would tap into your consulting budget, the Town Manager's Consulting Fund that you have currently available, but you would also uh, begin the process of um, looking for a um, um, a project manager. You'd put out an R F Q for that.
Yes, so that's a request for qualifications.
So that person, if the town meeting goes ahead with the project in, in May, the next day, you could presumably um, be ready to get someone on board pretty quickly as the project manager.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm, I'm prepared to offer some general comments about the article, but I didn't know you were going to make this available to, for public comment too. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll say them. They're not going to be long. I, I won't be repetitive. I, you know, I, I support this enthusiastically, the Council on Asian Board, uh, which uh, um, met subsequent to our last discussion on this and voted unanimously to support the board going forward with this and to take the money from, I think they included, they're taking the money out of free cash. Um, I think that the, the several meetings we've had on this, the public forum we had on this, um, there've been a lot of hard questions that the members of this board have put forward, and I think that's been very helpful to the process. Uh, and we've heard from the public on that too, uh, in, in helping to refine the numbers. I think this project represents a reasonable compromise uh, for, for the town to, uh, as the Finance Committee said, put this, put this subject to bed after so many years. Um, and I think it will, uh, I'm personally confident that town meeting voters will be able to recognize the proposal as a reasonable compromise of a major issue that affects uh, uh, and benefits a major portion of the population. Uh, as far as taking the money from, for free cash, um, I support that because the money's there. Um, it doesn't make any sense to me to go out and bond for this. Um, I know that items charged to free cash are fungible. Those that don't get free cash might have to be bonded. Um, but this is a major project. I know there are competing challenges uh, that the town has um, to deal with financially, uh, but it's our responsibility as a board to assign priorities uh, according to the timing of events. And um, I think this really merits coming out of free cash. And it's in my, I don't think anyone in this board, if we do support this, um, by majority vote, a unanimous vote, um, is doing this, um, because we want to avoid a two-thirds vote at town meeting. I would be supporting this. If the free cash were not available, I would be supporting a borrowing for it. Um, I just think it's money that is available, um, and we should do it. So I'm going to support um, putting this on the warrant and recommending it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, do you, anything say?
No, I, well said, Dean. Uh, you know, we've been around and around. Uh, this has been the, the project, the nomad project, as was, the terms were used, used earlier this evening. I'm very much in favor of it. I have some concern about the timetable. That's why I asked about the, the two timetables. I, um, it's going to take some, some pre-planning, which I think you're really doing with your comments this evening in terms of the site work, that you're going to prime the pump, if you will, with that. Think that's helpful. Um, and I think trying to get ahead as much as you can before we get a formal vote is, is, is smart. Um, I, I do think that if it, we were go to town meeting and it were to be, ask for a bonding, I do believe this would pass. So, so I'm very comfortable. I'm comfortable. Um, I would, I wouldn't mind testing that because it's been tested so many times. However, uh, I'm not going to force that issue one iota. Um, I do think it would pass. I think it will pass anyway. I think it's a good project. I think it's a really good compromise, as you noted, Dean, and uh, I'm certainly going to vote for it, and I also vote for the use of free cash. Uh, I'm, I'm excited about it, really excited about it, to be honest with you.
Shereen, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, I'm just concurring with the two comments made prior. Let's just move this forward.
Okay. Um, anything from the pub, I, I do have some comments, but I'll offer the, the public an opportunity to comment if they would like. I, I don't see anybody at the moment, do you? Um, I, I, I am committed to this. I want this to happen. Um, I, but I want you to s- hear me and see me as a skeptic. And I'm not a ske- I believe town ma- uh, meeting will pass it. Uh, I'm not quite as confident as, as Jeff, maybe, that it could get a two-thirds vote, but perhaps it could, and I would sure work like the Dickens to make that happen if that were the operative test. I don't think we ought to put any more burdens on this project than it absolutely must bear, and a two-thirds vote is not something it must bear. So I, and I'm, I'm in favor of the free cash approach. The timetable here, I, 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 I want to say, please prove me wrong. I, I have real doubts that you can get this done, the way you've laid it out here. It is absolutely not a solution to put this off to a winner bid. You need to go forward. If you need anything from us to do the pre-planning that you were talking about in the, in the, uh, the site work and so forth, I'm all for that as well, and please ask us to do that, or at least ask us to put it on the table and vote on it. But um, I, for example, I still remember that August twenty-two pres- presentation that Joel, the architect, I've forgotten his last name now.
Bargman.
Bargman made. They had in there, in the part of it that dealt with renovating um, one ninety-three, they had a half a million dollars for the, um, the transition, for the uh, while we're out of the building segment. You don't have anything close to that in here. I, I, I hope you're right. I, I just, I want to tell you that I, I don't want to be around to say, I told you so. I want to be around to say, I'm glad you got it done, and I hope I gave you a little bit of an incentive to make sure you do get it done the way it's laid out here, because I'm a little bit of a doubting Thomas, but I'm all for it. So those are my comments.
Mr. Chairman, um, there's a prepared motion. I don't think there was.
Uh, I thought there was.
I, I, I'm, there's a draft article, uh, subject to the revision and the explanation, but the article essentially authorizes the town to appropriate and transfer the sum of five million dollars from free cash for the purposes of expanding and renovating the existing Center for Active Living, C Fal located at one ninety-three Stony Hill Road. So I, I move that, um, the Select Board place this motion on the warrant.
Second.
The article on the warrant, sorry.
Uh, all those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and um, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board recommend this article to town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Go forth and succeed.
Go forth with all due alacrity.
Yes. Put your track shoes on. Okay. Mr. Bailey, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Rob Bailey, Director of Public Works.
Uh, as Rob is teeing this up, just note that Kathy had given you a replacement. Uh, there were just a couple of um, irregularities in the, the wording for the vote. So this is um, a transfer station appropriation from free cash. It is not a bonding authorization. Just wanted to just make that clear. There was a remnant sentence or two from a, a prior, uh, a prior staff report that before we had determined that free cash could be used. So it's free cash as well as the tax rate.
So just um, is, is the article as presented correct?
Yeah, so the, the article, um, right before the chart, it says the additional funding appropriated on this article and subsequent ballot question X. There's no ballot question X.
Did I?
Oh, got it, okay. It refers to a ballot question.
Yes, so the only, the referral is ballot question.
Okay, so the new one is correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the dollar, the, the funding amounts and everything is the same.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just do a quick recap of uh, where we've been. Uh, spring twenty-three, approved four point eight two million for the construction of Phase One and Phase Two. We still had two hundred and fifteen thousand remaining from the design contract from two thousand twenty. So that left uh, five million, thirty-five thousand dollars remaining for the construction of both phases. Um, Phase Two is estimated at two point one million. Bids are open in two thousand twenty-four for three point eight five two million, and the contract was awarded to J J Cardosi. I think it was a unanimous decision that the staff um, building was more important than the recycling area. So we were moving along. It's just some pictures to show, um, you know, construction began in September of twenty-four, um, with demo and um, hazardous material abatement. Um, construction continues through the winter, um, site utility work, foundation walls, um, Phase Two also with the steel erection. Um, uh, they did the building enclosures started and the concrete waterproofing on the blocking. The foundation has been completed. And so here we are, just a few days ago, with the, uh, the building envelope um, being installed. Um, we've had some change orders to date. Um, and in addition to the construction administration, bidding, design, O P M, material testing, et cetera, um, has taken up another three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So that leaves a, a smaller portion remaining, but I'll get into those details in a moment. So Phase One is the recycling area. So Phase Two is the red circle in the building, and Phase One is everything else, pretty much. Um, so uh, it was estimated at two point seven two million last year. Uh, bids are open. They came in at three point one seven two million, and we didn't award the contract because we didn't have enough money to fund both phases. So we looked at the design, took a harder look at it. Again, we talked about the stump dump in that green circled area. Uh, we talked to, um, we talked, looking at, looked for efficiencies. We did exploratory tests, and we looked to refine the design to what it is now. Um, we did, uh, conducted interviews with transfer station staff. We looked at, looking, find um, improved customer flow with vehicular traffic, and we also integrated the tipping floor. I think you may have all recall that. Um, but the tipping floor is the big blue building. Um, commercial haulers, residential trash, all gets deposited in that building. And back in two thousand twenty, the building renovation was proposed at one point two two million. Um, that would have been much higher nowadays, but we've reduced the scope, so it's only the concrete floor. And the picture to the right just isn't a kind of a close-up of the concrete floor as it exists today. It should be smooth concrete. You can see all the grooves, the exposed rebar. Um, we've popped a tire on our, uh, loader for twenty-five hundred dollars to get that repaired. Um, it's just a, it's just an area that breeds bacteria and odors and things like that. It's actually pretty nasty. So I would like to get that as a smooth surface, workable surface again. And so um, looking at the as-bid design on the left and the revised design on the right. Um, and I will get into a few more specifics, uh, just to have a close-up of that. So this is the revised Phase One layout. Uh, Phase Two is the, um, if I get this mouse to work. Now, there we go. Phase Two is the building up there. Is this not appearing on the screen? No. There it is. Uh, so Phase Two is the building. Up here is the tipping floor. Here's the gatehouse and the scale. The scale currently is on, on the upper side of the building, but we figured we'd move it to the lower side, so uh, transactions can occur from the driver to the gatehouse attendant, instead of having to, the gatehouse attendant has to go up here and have, you know, get out of their vehicle, and it's just, it's just more efficient uh, this way. get out of their vehicle, and it's just, it's just more efficient this way. The swap shop has been relocated, so it's outside of the stump dump. It was here previously. So, we reduced that impact. Plus, we can get traffic coming and going much quicker. Currently, the swap shop, you know, is all the way down here. So, everybody has to drive through the recycling area. And this is the recycling area. So, we tried to make it as efficient as possible, one way in, one way out. Angled parking, you know, five containers or dumpsters in this area. This is all that's like textiles and light bulbs and other smaller things. If these spaces are all filled, the person can drive around the other side. And this is basically a mirror image on this side as well. Then they can go, if they were to dump brush or leaves or anything in this area, and then they can leave and exit the facility as they need to. So, just to break down to the cost, again, the funding that was approved in 2023, 4.82 million remaining from designs. We had $5 million, $35,000 to spend. By the time it's all said and done with the change orders, and we'd left $75,000 in there as a contingency. Even though we're under construction, we didn't want to spend everything without any unknowns. So, we have about $650,000 to carry forward to the next phase. So, if we take that, plus the Phase 1 construction, which is 3.1 million, the tipping floor repairs, 408,000. And then, again, owner's costs, bidding and construction, complete the design, material testing, that nature, that's 335,000. And then, we added a 5% contingency on there, just because there are some unknowns. We've reduced it to 5% because we've already had the benefit of going out to bid once. So, we really have a pretty good idea of what the number should be. And we think we've been pretty conservative with our budget estimating in the contract. So, basically, we're at 3.4 million needed to construct Phase 1. So, financial impact, it'll be funded with $3 million of free cash, which has no impact on the tax rate. And the additional $400,000 will be raised and appropriated and funded through the tax levy with a tax rate impact of 4 cents for one year. So, we respectfully recommend the select board vote to place the additional funding for the transfer station project in the amount of 3.4 million on the warrant, and vote to recommend its transfer station project for additional funding in the amount of 3.4 million. And that's the, that's the draft article there. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add, what's the timing of this? So, if town meeting approves this in May, when do we begin?
We would like to have the design finalized over the summer and do a fall bid to have it constructed over the winter, kind of like how the building is being constructed now.
And it would be completed in, like, June of 2026?
We would hope to have it completed before summer, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm supportive of this. Again, this is a longstanding project. You know, we've had some challenges with it because the bids came in high last time. And, you know, there's work going on now. It's important to the people that, it's important to the town generally. It's important to the people that use the facility. It's important to the neighbors because we've heard from them over the years about the noise and the odors. And this is something that's long overdue. Thank you.
Jeff?
It's long overdue. I echo everything Dean just said. It's a priority, it should be a priority. We ran out of money. We wanted to do it earlier. We just didn't have enough funds. I have one stupid suggestion. I had a little trouble going from balanced, less cost, to get it balanced, balanced, less cost. I mean, kind of going back and forth. If it's more of a, more of a vertical analysis of, here's the balance, here are the costs, a net balance, just do subtotals. Where the heck do they get, anyway? That's a net. Very much in favor of it, and I know the tipping floor is a disaster. It looks like it's a disaster. It's unacceptable. So, I'm very much in favor. Thank you.
So, you're comfortable that you're not going to be $4,679 short when you get to the end? You'll figure that out?
We'll find that money if we need to.
Okay.
Michael, he rounded down.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I, absolutely. Ms. Gibbs?
Thank you. We had discussed this before, but my feeling is that by default, we have become a regional transfer station because we're allowing trash and construction materials from other towns. And I think we have three commercial haulers. And through further questioning, we learned that Brewster does not allow any commercial haulers. So, they bring their trash to us. They don't personally, but the haulers that carry it for them. So, we end up with that. And we learned that Orleans and Harwich, the same, that it's cheaper for them to bring it to us than it is for them to haul it off Cape. And we also talked about how we would tell them that they cannot bring any trash or construction material from any other towns to Chatham. But there's no way to prove that. And I believe that's why the tipping floor is in the shape it's in because we have not only Chatham's refuse, but we have Harwich's, Orleans', and Brewster's. And we are paying for this. They are not, except for the normal fees. And I believe the same problem is going to occur in another four or five years where the floor is going to get damaged and there's going to be odors, unless we do something at this point to control it. And so, we have the luxury of paying for it ourselves, the taxpayers. But then, chances are, eventually, our rates are going to go up again for us to dump trash and various other articles, you know, whether it's air conditioners or furniture or whatever. So, I think something should be in the warrant article to address that and say that we are going to prohibit trash, commercial haulers bringing trash from other communities. I don't think it's right. They can take it to their own facilities and deal with it and not bring it to Chatham. We never voted on this to be a regional transfer station. That was not the intent ever. And maybe that should be in a warrant article. Do we want us to be? I don't think we do. And, you know, I am for the project. It has to be done. But I think we have to put restrictions on it, or we're going to find ourselves in the same position in five years. And there will be odors, and the floor will get destroyed. And we're going to have to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I could ask one more question?
Go ahead.
There are potholes. There are potholes there right now that are huge, particularly coming out of the recycling area. The cars, they get filled with water and you can't see them. And we can't wait to have that, those potholes fixed until this construction begins because cars are getting damaged. You know, it's going to ruin the alignments when people drive through them not realizing how deep. So, if DPW can catch those as soon as possible, I think that would be a good idea because they are really deep. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen?
Thanks, Mike. I'm in favor of the project, and I have been all along. I just, briefly, I just wanted to say that we need a safe, manageable, clean facility. And this is how we're going to get it done. I'm really happy that we're finally here, and let's move on.
I'm going to say what she said. And with that, unless there's any other comment, I'll take a motion.
Mike, I know that Mr. Meadows would be extremely pleased.
Well, good.
It's been one of his projects for a long, long time. So, I think he'd be very pleased.
Good.
I thought you were going to offer a motion.
Well, you know, yes.
Go ahead, I'll second it.
Move approval. Move approval as presented.
Is this, yeah, we don't, we need to place and then recommend.
Like to place this on the warrant? Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Recommend?
Move to recommend, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I think, are we done? I think we're done.
I've got two more.
Oh, you want to stay there for the next one?
I think it's sewer capital was the next one.
Yeah, sewer capital, yep.
So, yes, presenting on the $32 million capital sewer request. Another brief overview of kind of where we've been. This map represents sewer status as it exists now. Phase 1 is the dark blue area, approximately 4,500 parcels. Phase 2, did I say Phase 2? I'm sorry. Phase 2 is the light blue area, approximately 2,300 parcels. The area in red is sewer that's already been completed, and the areas in green are either under design or under construction. Since 2010, 108 million have been spent on active or completed sewer projects. The current construction activity, if I can get this mouse to work, thank you. And so, 1D2A is nearing completion. It's just a few punch list items. It's over here on Meeting House Road and Mill Hill Road, general areas. 1E2 is the Stage Harbor Pump Station area and the old mill boatyard. That is, all the sewer work is done. We're just working on the pump station behind the Harbor Masters garage. 1C5 is the Oyster Pond Sewer Extension area. That covers this area, a couple of larger pump stations, includes the Oyster Pond condo development. And down here is the Mill Pond Pump Station, which is replacing a 50-year-old original pump station. Those are the four active sewer construction projects we have ongoing right now. So, looking for the future, we're going to continue to address nitrogen loading. In the short term, we're going to look at expanding the gravity collection system. And for the long range, we're looking at strategic expansion and including critical pump station locations. So, for the next phase is Phase 1F1. It includes bidding, design, and construction. We would finish, I'll get into some more detail on these, but it's basically finishing the Cedar Street, the Cedar Street Pump Station design, bidding it for construction, and a construction schedule of spring of '26 to summer of '28. And this is the Phase 1F1 Cedar Street Pump Station. The pump station is down here in blue. It's on a town-owned parcel of land. It includes another 69 parcels and sewer going down a lot of the side streets as well. Phase 1F1 also includes the Route 28 corridor, which, this is Route 28 here. And there's already a gravity sewer main down Route 28. And some of these smaller neighborhoods in green were overlooked in previous sewer development. So, it was kind of easier to get some of our numbers built up there, get some folks hooked up to gravity sewer, and get 138 parcels on gravity sewer. It's pretty easy to manage a project like that, to get those folks hooked up. So, we're looking to develop that. Also as part of this is Phase 1F2, which includes design bidding and construction. We'd like to work on the design starting the summer, bid it for construction in the spring of '27, and hopefully have that completed by summer of '29. Phase 1F2 includes the Barn Hill-Oyster River area. So, this is Oyster River here, and this is Barn Hill Road up here. There is some challenges with this, you know, specifically locating pump stations. You know, we need to locate pump stations at the lowest elevation, and that's down by the water. So, we do face some challenges there. But we do have a few proposed pump stations. There is a, as a town-owned parcel here, and then there's a cul-de-sac here on Chatfield. So, there are some opportunities. Depending on how fast we can advance this, we may have to partition some of this off and not be constructed at an accelerated rate. But it's, it'd certainly be in the design criteria when we start, we start developing it. Also in Phase 1F2 is the Katy Ford Road area. So, this is George Ryder Road here, the airport's up in this area. So, this is Katy Ford Road. We would propose a pump station down in this cul-de-sac, pump up low pressure here, but the rest of these parcels would all be on gravity. And that would, that would flow to the existing George Ryder Road pump station down in this area. Looking ahead into the future, you know, we've recently submitted in our SRF application. We would look to submit another one in two years. Estimated cost would be around $40 million. It would address a critical pump station in this yellow area, which is Sewerage Area Number 20, and it would contain Pump Station Number 20. It's a critical pump station for North Chatham. It would also, immediately after Pump Station 20 was developed, we would look at the blue areas, 17 and 18 here, connecting those areas because they're in Phase 1. The green areas are in Phase 2. But in the future, all of these areas would also pump to Pump Station 20. Pump Station 20 would pump directly back to the WPCF. Two years in the future from that point, in 2029, we would be looking at an SRF request of $30 million. And that's for Pump Station Number 73 in the 73 Sewerage area. This is all Pleasant Bay up through here. This is just off of 28. Another critical sewer area. We would pump this directly back to the WPCF as well. The areas adjacent in blue would be connected soon after 73 was done. And then, the areas in future in the green would be connected in future years. So, the draft article, let's see if the town will vote to appropriate $32 million for paying the cost of design, renovation, and construction. I think you've all seen, this is pretty similar language than a lot of the other sewer appropriations we've had in the past. Items funded for this article would be the design and construction for Phase 1F1, part of 1F2, which isn't listed on here specifically, but preliminary in design for the, planning for the future vital pump stations, and also the purchase of sewer grinder pumps for residents who need them due to elevation or distance challenges that restrict their ability to connect to gravity sewer. So, Phase 1F has been submitted to the state revolving fund. In 2026, it's on the intended use plan for 0% funding. The IUP ranked Chatham third highest in the state for the points eligible for funding. So, we received 554 out of a possible 599 points. So, that's, it's really good status. So, it's almost guaranteed we'll have the funding, you know, for number three. There were quite a few applicants. And so, this being, being listed on the IUP tells us that we have to have submitted plans no later than October 15th of 2025. They don't have to be final plans, but they have to be largely complete. So, that's, that's what we're up against right now to get this article passed and at town meeting and get it funded. Construction contracts must be signed no later than June 30th, 2026.
That's really good.
So, this is the question that would be on a draft ballot. And I guess that's the last slide.
So, I just want to make an editorial comment here before we get into the substance. If you go back, it's the same here. The language where you get, where it says, "including but not limited to land acquisition costs," et cetera, et cetera. Purchase of sewer grinder pumps. I think you need to add the phrase inside that comma after pumps and related installation stipends. And that goes in this, and it also goes in the, in the article. And there are a couple of places in the description where it should go as well.
Agreed. Thank you.
Just a question. You don't need to have the dollar amount in the ballot question?
No, I'm sorry. No, we don't.
Dean? I just wanted to suggest, this is, it's an excellent layout of what the long-term plan is. Can this be forwarded to the Water and Sewer Committee for their information? Maybe the SRAK might want it as well. Just out of idle curiosity, who were the, what were the two projects that beat us out?
I don't remember which towns they were from, but, you know, third is pretty darn well.
Oh, I know.
We beat Orleans, they were number four.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if you happen to encounter that, make a note of it and let us know when you find it.
I've got the list, I just didn't bring it with me.
Okay.
I really liked the overview. I think for town meeting, it'd be really important to note exactly what the $30 million is funding. I know the two is kind of being allocated for grinder pumps and related costs. But what's, what's the 30 actually going to accomplish? And if you could show that on a map. The maps were great, and the maps going forward were great as well. I think it's really important to tie that back to money. This is what, this $30 million is going to fund, guys. This is what you're buying. I think it's really important to make that very clear.
So, I can break it down by design costs and construction costs and, you know, see where we go from there. where we go from there.
I just want to see a visual of, this is, you know, in the town, this is, this is the area you're going to be searing. This is where we're going to be working, and these are the, these are the pump stations we're going to be constructing. Blah, blah, blah. Really, the presentation's excellent.
Is it asking too much to put this, I mean, in the explanation in the article? I know it can't be colored, but...
Right, so that's something we just need to fine-tune, and then the presentation at town meeting could be very similar to this in color.
I think it's important for this reason, and the whole business of grinder pumps, we went back to two thousand and ten, eleven. If you go to the town meeting vote, you don't find anything, really. It'd be nice to have this for the future wards of selectmen.
Is there any reason you can't have that as an exhibit?
We can include it, it's just the difference in coloration. We print the warrant in black and white, it gets mailed to each household, but certainly online it is in color and for the presentations at town meeting and wherever else that we need to go. Rob was at the FinCom today, too, and they were very impressed by the presentation.
Well, maybe you can, you know, take the things that are, I mean, there's a lot of really good information in there that doesn't depend on the color slides, so maybe either grayscale some of that or just give the information without the color additions. Okay. Shereen, did you have anything to say?
No, I, this was really informative and a really good presentation, and I agree that the townspeople would really like to see this. And I think it should be part of the visual presentation that's presented by, I guess Rob would do it. So I'm really happy to see it, and it explains a lot, so let's do it.
Good. Comments from the public? I don't see any hands raised either here in the room or otherwise. So can we get a motion to place?
I move to place the wastewater capital borrowing in the amount of thirty-two million dollars on the two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
And I'm going to, I'm going to just remind everybody that we're adding the language and related installation stipends following the word pumps. And with that amendment, I will call the roll, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the wastewater capital borrowing in the amount of thirty-two million dollars. Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I move to place the wastewater capital borrowing in the amount of thirty-two million dollars on the ballot for the two thousand and twenty-five annual town election. Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Okay. Good to go, thank you. Next, we have the wastewater capitalist stabilization funding warrant article?
Yeah, you're almost done with me. So, yeah, these are the three capital projects that we want to fund under that program. First is the Stage Harbor Pump Station. I would add a third pump to the pump station for seven hundred thousand dollars. The second is the Water Pollution Control Facility denitrification filters air system for two hundred thousand dollars. And the third is the Original Sewer Collection System repairs, which is an annual request for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So regarding the Stage Harbor Pump Station, it's located here, backside of the town parking lot behind the Orpheum Theater. It's part of the original sewer system. It was reconstructed in two thousand and fourteen. The original pump station had three pumps, but when it was reconstructed, only two pumps were installed. They were larger pumps, they were able to handle the capacity. But now as we have more sewer coming online, especially with the Cedar Street Pump Station, we'll need to install that third pump. So it would be a similar setup as this. It would also include integration of new electrical gear, piping, SCADA programming, things of that nature. So the total cost is seven hundred thousand for design bidding and construction. The denitrification filters air system. So this is an important part of the Water Pollution Control Facility of converting nitrates to gas. Chatham uses upflow filters in this process. I know it's compressed air and a sand media. And I don't, you know, I don't know all the details. I leave that to the people that deal with that day to day, but I know it's an important part of the whole denitrification process and removing nitrogen from our effluent. So that's the compressor that we need to replace. It's large, it's old, and it's reached the end of its useful life, and we don't want to have any failure, so it's just part of our normal replacement program to get that replaced.
Is the nitrogen gas then released into the air? Is that what happens?
It's recovered, and I, you know, I'm not sure. It's more to release, to remove the nitrates that are going into the groundwater, but I know a lot of it is all recovered through that whole process. So it's two hundred thousand dollars to replace just the air system. And then a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the original sewer system repairs. Many times this is spent rebuilding manholes, and in Route twenty-eight, the manholes take a beating every year, and it seems like we're out there every couple of years rebuilding those, but heavy truck traffic tends to wreak havoc on this. And we also have deficient sewer pipes that we would address. So the draft article is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds, the wastewater capital stabilization, in the sum of one million seventy thousand dollars.
Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the sewer request article for seven hundred thousand dollars for the Stage Harbor Pump Station, two hundred thousand dollars for replacement of denitrification filters air system, and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for repairs to the Original Sewer Collection System, in the total amount of one million seventy thousand dollars on the warrant.
Before I call the roll here, I just want to say, with respect to the article and the explanation, I read through this thing, and I'm asking myself, what's the seven hundred thousand dollars for? Your first slide says it's a new pump, the third pump. If we can get that into the article and the explanation, I think that'll explain to people why we're spending seven hundred thousand dollars there. So with that suggestion, I'll call the roll, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye, I think it's important to note that the funds are coming from the wastewater capital stabilization fund as well.
Right, good.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to recommend the sewer request article for seven hundred thousand dollars for Stage Harbor Pump Station, two hundred thousand dollars for replacement of denitrification filters air system, and one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for repairs to the Original Sewer Collection System, in the total amount of one million seventy thousand dollars. Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro. Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens. And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Rob. This is the petitioned protective zoning bylaw. Yes, sir, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Thad Aldridge, I'm with Impact Chatham. Just to start with the previous article, the gaseous nitrogen would be released into the atmosphere about seventy-nine percent of what you're breathing is N two. It's inert, it's everywhere, so that's the end product, that's the good thing.
Thank you.
So we have... In nineteen sixty-six, we adopted the conservancy district. In nineteen seventy-nine, we expanded the conservancy district. And this is a zoning feature that protects every wet, wetland. In nineteen eighty-five, we expanded to the floodplain, and in two thousand and fourteen, our floodplains expanded. Conservancy districts have a lot of rules associated with them. You're not allowed to fill, regrade, or excavate them. And this comes from the original, where these were the wet, wetlands that we really wanted to protect. We are allowed to put in gas, water, sewer, electric, communication, septic systems, and piping for swimming pools. What we're not allowed to do is put in stormwater. We're not allowed to regrade, to redirect stormwater into low points. So it's really something that we would like to address. I have a number of slides that show that, yes, we do need to treat our stormwater before it goes into the, into the water, into the wetlands, or into the groundwater. But what I really have is a map that shows all of the properties in Chatham that are subject to the bylaw. And thus, we're not able to put in stormwater systems or adequately treat the stormwater. Traditional stormwater systems, it'll be a catch basin, leach pit. These areas are low. You could say groundwater is high. There's very little separation that's possible between the bottom of the leach pit and the groundwater, and that's where treatment would occur. And these are all to the low points, just like the pump stations have to be at the low points in town, all the water is going to run down to these areas. So there are a number of older subdivisions, they're all well within the floodplains. And we're looking to just enable developers to be able to address these issues when they redevelop sites. Obviously, no new construction can occur within, but, for example, we're allowed to put driveways and modify driveways and roads, but we're not allowed to regrade in order to put in the stormwater systems for those roads. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the turquoise areas, can you, you've, no, go the other way. So I'm just looking to see, now, the real turquoise areas are saying we can't direct stormwater in those areas, is that what you're saying?
So the turquoise areas are the floodplain, the conservancy district. The brown areas are all the roads that are within...
Yep.
We can't regrade the area to direct stormwater to...
Conservancy.
To things, to holes. We can't dig holes there in order to put the stormwater into. And with the stormwater regulations and the handbook, in these cases, we're really looking at bioretention basins or other, basically a hole in the ground with plants in it that will help to trap the water, help treat it, and then flow it further. One of the great, a couple of the great projects that we've done have been in the Oyster Pond area, technically prohibited by zoning for the regrading that occurred in order to help clean up Oyster Pond. All the work done in the town parking lot would have been in violation of zoning, and obviously the town is more exempt than a private developer, but when the zoning bylaw applies, it would be good to be able to, or when the stormwater regulation applies, it would be good to be able to meet it.
What, if I may, are you done, Jeff?
Yes, I am, yeah.
What do you, what do you do now, and what would you do differently if this is adopted?
On redevelopment projects, we leave things the way that they are. So if there's sheet flow coming off of a driveway going directly into a wetland or flowing over a little bit of ground before it gets to the wetland, it stays as is.
Okay.
We don't have the opportunity to regrade the area to entrap the water, direct it to other things.
Would you have underground piping that carries the water into, like, a catch basin in the street if the, and the next, the nearest road?
So it's capturing the water, and then it's putting it through treatment systems. And again, in most cases, this is going to be a bioretention basin, hole in the ground with plants in it that will hold the water, helping to clean the water, and then it will move on to either another basin, infiltration into the ground.
Okay. So whatever water does wind up back in the ground, that's treated?
That's the important thing, is to be able to treat it before it goes back into the ground.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, I mean, it sounds to me, to my naive, relatively uninformed mind, like a terrific idea and something, I guess all we're really being asked to do at this point is refer it to the Planning Board, but, and there'll be a public hearing, Planning Board will act, and then it'll come back to us when we will have to say yea or nay. The question I have really is why this is proceeding the way it is by petitioned article as opposed to what would be the norm, more norm, the way our next zoning bylaw discussion has proceeded? Is it just a matter of there being the difficulty of getting the Planning Board's attention and the need to kind of accelerate this, or is there some other reason?
It's why we're here. The Planning Board is dealing with much larger zoning items. We started Impact Chatham to be able to take care of some of these small items. This is one paragraph that goes into the bylaw that enables people to be able to clean the environment.
And you would anticipate that this will be favorably received by the Planning Board?
I can always hope.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
We'll referral to the Planning Board, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thanks very much, sir.
Thank you.
And speaking of which, we have Mr. Spru and Ms. O'Grady with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center Protective Zoning Bylaw Presentation. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Christine O'Grady, the town planner, and I'm here with Art Spru, the Chair of the Planning Board. We're here because we're presenting the West Chatham Neighborhood Center District Bylaw. It is a zoning bylaw that has been being worked on in the town for a few years. It also comes with a change to the zoning map as part of the, another article within the package. Basically, the West Chatham Neighborhood District runs from, runs along Route twenty-eight from George Ryder Road to Barn Hill. There are fifty-four parcels within it. They are currently within two of the existing zoning districts, being the General Business Three and the R twenty. There are two roundabouts at either end of it. As you all know, this will be a whole new district entirely. I'm sorry, which one? That one? What's going on here? I don't know. It's really weird. Here we go. Oh, that way, okay. I'm sorry about that. Let's all just hit that one. Yeah. This is my first time presenting up here and sharing a screen and everything, so I apologize, but I've got it down now. Thank you, Gary. The purpose of this has been expressed to you numerous times over the years. Basically, there are a number of goals that go along with this. They are to implement the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, stronger connections with the vision, the regulations, and the development plan, and it's to enhance the character of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, to promote multimodal transportation or multimodal methods of transportation, I should say, to give the Planning Board an opportunity to do more flexible parking standards within this district, to have a range of housing types, to increase the supply of affordable and attainable housing, and to include a twenty percent inclusionary component to this piece, and it's to provide more year-round housing for the town. The next slide shows the boundary. The graphic on the right is the boundary, the graphic on the left is the subzones within that district. Basically, what we're going to have is a mix of commercial and residential along the Route twenty-four, the Route twenty-eight corridor. Route 24, the Route 28 corridor. We've increased it from 100 feet to 150 feet, based on the last couple of studies that they've done with this. And that's pretty much it for this one. I would say for the next one, this started with, the planning board, after coming up with the initial concept, they applied for a DLTA grant, and with the assistance of the Cape Cod Commission, they drafted the zoning bylaw, and they did a, what they call a form-based code, so they kind of see some of the concepts here. This form-based code is, is used within the actual bylaw that'll be presented, and it's just to help the developers to understand better what, what the vision is, planning board, what they want. So that is in there in a couple of different places, I would say. Next, the planning board hired a consultant, BSC Group, and they did a build-out analysis. They did this with the zoning bylaw as it was drafted by the Cape Cod Commission, and it was for 12 units per approximately 40,000, for 40,000 square feet, which is approximately one acre in size. They decided after doing this, when, that the, the density of this was probably a little bit too big, so then they worked with Union Studios and developed a visualization study. This visualization study looked at three parcels along the Route 28 corridor, that being 1652 Main Street, 1671 Main Street, and 1589 Main Street. Those were picked because they basically have three different concepts. You know, some have constraints on the property due to, you know, topography and things like that. One is within the, the airport, the, the RPZ zone, and then one is at a corner near a, near one of the roundabout sections. What I would tell you is, so the one at, the, the one up at the top, top right, the 1671 Main Street, basically, that is the post office building. And what we've, what we've done here, or what Union Studios worked with the planning board to do, is to kind of reimagine how that, that, that particular property could look. These are all just examples. You know, it's all dependent on what developers come, you know, come to town, who's selling their properties, all of those things. But basically, what we would have here would be, the front half of the, of the parcel would remain, or the parcel, the part of the parcel closest to the Route 28 would remain a one-story building, and that would remain the post office, right? You don't usually mix a post office with other things in a lot of cases. The second building further back from the main road would be a multifamily unit, and it would have, or maybe a commercial, there would be a commercial component to it, maybe, maybe not. And then the back half of that property would be townhouses. So what we would be having with these, if it was just the post office and then the residential units, we'd have 3,000 feet, square feet of post office, then we'd have 25 units of multifamily building, and then we'd have seven additional townhouse, townhouse units. So we'd end up needing parking, approximately 70, 72 parking spaces with that reduced parking option that we were looking at from the beginning. And so eight of those would be res, commercial, and the other 64 would be residential. The next slide is just what the next steps are going to be. We're trying to keep this moving, obviously. If you refer this back to the planning board, we're going to hold the planning board public hearing on March 10th and get the recommend, recommendations back to the select board on, between the 11th and the 18th, which I know is when the warrant closes. And we would have a potential meeting with the finance committee. We don't have a date for that yet, and obviously, all in preparation for May 10th. The only other thing I would say to you is that the planning board has, they have discussed the potential for information sessions after the public hearing, depending on how that goes, but no dates are actually set yet. And those are the highlights. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to ask of the chair, or if you'd like to add anything?
Just, just a few things. This, of course, has been in the works for a long time. The Comprehensive Plan and the, the Route 28 Visioning Study is what kicked it off. I think the idea of the form-based code, which was shared with, with the board from Cape Cod Commission, is what we really gravitated toward. We were looking for the village, village center concept of what we wanted the image to be, and this was a, a good way about giving that information out so that it's developed in the way the visualizations are shown here. That's not what we have today. What we have today is pretty much, the bylaw allows a strip-type development with parking in the front, and that's not the concept of a village center that we're looking for, very much like what the downtown area is. So that process was started off in 2020 with the Cape Cod Commission, and it's just been a refinement and a refinement since that point. We pushed through quite a few different things over the last three or four months, and that had to do with several different elements. The build-out analysis that BSC Group indicated to us, she said that we need to do some adjustments in how these sites were developed. We made some changes to the first A1 zone, the distance back from Route 28. We wanted a 50% commercial space in, in addition to the residential development. We don't want all residential development in the village center area. That was a noted component that BSC emphasized very much, that we may not get as much commercial as we like. So we, we tried to do a balance there. The rest of the A2 zones and B zones do allow much more robust multifamily development. We took a look at how we could manage that, that type of development. Five units as of right, and then if there is a, an additional amount of residential that a developer wants to do, that would be a density bonus, certain criteria, special permit criteria. And at the same time, we took a look at how we, how we manage that component of it, because it may not be able to happen all, all at once. We added that additional distance in the A1 zone. That helped us with that balance. We asked that the parking be adequate for the development that is proposed. This is not like our, our town center area, where we have additional parking adjacent to some development that is owned by the town. There will not be any at this point that we can visualize, so therefore, we wanted to make sure that it was adequate, and that these were interconnected so that people could park someplace and then walk. That's the best thing that we were trying to achieve associated with this. We put in a component to allow more green space in the residential area so that, and certainly, other streetscape components in the frontage area with any, any of the development along Route 28. So all of those changes occurred. We had new town council. We had several items that were raised by town council that we, we pushed through and adjusted. We wanted to clarify and make sure that we were identifying and revising anything that was an issue that town council was bringing up. That took us a couple, a couple of months to get through. I do want to compliment our community development staff, Christine and Katie and Gloria, and the town council, because we were pushing a lot of things through, and I was asking them to turn things around within days or weeks instead of months and months. That's what got us where we are right now. We got a unanimous, unanimous support from the, from the planning board on this at our last meeting, that this is the direction that we want to head in. It's not, it's not perfect, because we couldn't answer all the things that town council wanted us to do, so we have a list that we are going to create and resolve those as soon as we think that's viable. But we believe that this is in the right form and the right shape to present at town meeting at this point. So we're requesting your support for that.
Thank you very much. Dean?
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. Appreciate all the work that you've done. I, I haven't really watched much of what you've been doing, but I know you've been working on this for a long, long time. Just a couple of quick points. These pictures are very pretty. I just, the one up on the right, you were talking about the post office. Which building is the post office? Is that the?
Well, that's, this is, this is the post off, current post office site. This is what a redevelopment would look like.
Would look like, okay, okay.
Okay. So if you take a look at that building there, you're looking toward the south. The existing building would be on the right side, and it would just pretty much line up on the right side of that property. So the whole concept of this is to redevelop it to look like this. We could see in this one, since we've expanded the area to about 150 feet, that there could be a couple of buildings that were a commercial and residential mix, and then some multifamily residential and rare. So, but the, the idea is, if you're just going to comply with the as-of-right, you have a two-story building that you can build. And that's another concept on how to manage this. If you want to go with the density bonus, you can go with two and a half stories, but there's some, lots of other criteria that have to apply.
Okay, thank you. And of course, if, if this were to be passed at town meeting, and it requires, I think, a two, this require two-thirds vote? There's housing involved in it, it's still two-thirds. An existing property owner who doesn't want to change and doesn't want to sell his property, they're, they're grandfathered in.
Absolutely, they are.
So it's really up to them. I just had a question about the, the use, prohibited uses. And the very last one, on, on your chart in the material, one single-family dwelling per lot, and I know there was some discussion about buying single-family houses in this area, in, over the past year or two. Has that, and you've had a lot of pub, you, all your meetings are public. Have you had any reaction to that? I just wondered what the response was. I, I favor sending this to you, obviously, but...
Not too much, but the idea that we had is, is the town has residential development in like 95% of it, single-family residential, R-20, R-40, R-60. The concept of single-family can actually occur here. It could be, for example, because we're allowing multiple structures on a single development, right? So you could put what looked, what would be like a, a single-family, like cottage there, and there could be multiple ones of those. Not necessarily the most cost-effective for a developer. We think the, a developer would want to do something closer to what Union Studios has introduced here. But it, they could come up with a way to actually pursue something like that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be separate individual lots with single-family homes on it. It would, it would be multiple structures on a single property.
And so if I, if I were the owner of 40,000-square-foot lots currently undeveloped in that area?
Yep.
I don't know if there is one.
We have, we have several that are three acres.
Okay. And I want to put a single, if this is passed and adopted by town meeting, and I wanted to put a single, one single-family house on it, that would be prohibited?
That's correct.
Okay. I just thought, and my final point is, I, I don't know if this is an edit or not. I, I couldn't see it. In, in that use chart, there's a footnote two on the second page, residential uses are allowed, but I didn't see the antecedent of the two in the, in the chart itself, and...
In the actual table?
Yeah.
The two is on, on the left-hand column, next to residential, down at the bottom of the, so it's those, it's the text that goes vertical.
Okay. I don't, you can't see it on this because of, it's darkened.
Yeah, I think it's just because it's a little dark in there.
Okay, I didn't see the two.
But it is there, but thank you.
That was a mistake. Thank, thank you very much.
The other thing I would, I would tell you all is that part of what the chair had referred to with, with some changes that may be required is because we're still awaiting some of the things with the seasonal communities from the state level. We don't know when that's going to come, so we don't want to wait upon that.
And all we're being asked to do tonight is to refer this to you, so you get the process moving.
Right.
It would come back to us for a recommendation to town meeting.
That's correct. Our intent is to have a, a public hearing on it, the 10th?
On the 10th.
10th of March, and then we would bring it back forward, assuming that is, it is voted on by the, a planning board and for one article.
Well, the board and the staff, and Mr. Schell is, is your liaison, and he's more conversant with...
It's amazing, he's there all the time.
But it, I, I, you know, I served on a planning board in another town, and it's a lot of work, and you, you all are to be commended, you and the staff, for the work that you do on this, and I appreciate your explanation tonight. Thank you.
Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Schell. Yeah, I know you guys have been working really hard on this for a long, long time, and it's, there's a lot of compromise, et cetera. I'm wondering, if you go back to, say, the 1650, the visualizations, please, and, and the visualization for 1652 in particular, knowing the owner there, has anybody vetted this with any developers at all about how a, you know, so, so you've got a visualization, is there a developer that's interested in even achieving that kind of vision? And I understand that if the developer did want to achieve this kind of a vision, this zoning would now would allow it, is, is what the visualization means.
That's correct.
I get it.
Now, he wouldn't have to do all of this.
No, no, I know, but, but, but the zoning, the particular changes in the zoning bylaw that you're suggesting would allow a developer to do that type of a development, if you will, that visualization.
That's correct.
And you're driving, I think that one of the driving assumptions that you're bringing to bear is a planning board, and certainly, have listened to the town and its needs, is that a need for some greater density in areas that still could handle greater, greater density. That's done tastefully and, and, et cetera, you know, done tastefully.
And I think the form base, which is this visualization, is what the vehicle was that we said tipped us over so that we, we felt comfortable with it, and that it, we didn't, didn't want to put a box up there.
Right.
That was not the concept that we saw on behalf of the town for a village center type of...
I do, I do recall that Cape Cod Commission came in and did presentations with many of these concepts, you know, centering on a, on a village center, if you will, and I really do kind of understand where you're coming from. I'm going to support the referral back to the planning board, but I do own property in this area, and I'm quite conflicted here. And I'm quite conflicted with the, with respect of not being allowed to build a single-family home on property that I've owned for a long time and paid taxes on a long time. So I'm not certain of my support going forward. I'd likely recuse myself, but I need to be very clear about this now and then going forward. So I'm, I'm comfortable voting for a referral back to the planning board. However, I'm not going to be able to attend that particular hearing, which bothers me greatly, to be honest with you. I'll be out of town, I'll be away. But I, I'm, just conceptually, it bothers me that you would not allow someone that's own property for a long time to, to not do with that property what they're allowed to do now. You're denying folks the right to build a single-family home.
If it's the GB3 district, it's not allowed now.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it's not allowed now.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, more to come. Again, I'm going to vote to refer it to the planning board. I'm not, I'm uncertain about my support going forward, and again, I'm not going to be able to be at the hearing.
Our, our view on this is, we need to establish a village center. We're also looking at the adjacent areas to, what, if the village center passes, and this is the, what the district will look like, we're looking at, look, the edges of what would be the, the future boundary area, and looking how development can, can occur there. There might be a more residential density that could occur there. We could actually come up some concepts that you're talking about. That's where we would focus the next phase of our attention, once this passes, as well as working at the other village center areas.
Well, I'm on the periphery, so, we're on the periphery. Anyway, so, wouldn't mind further conversation. Again, I'm going to be away, I'm not going to be able to go to the hearing.
So I would tell you that the planning board webpage has been updated to include all of the past, the past studies and presentations that have led up to this. And then there is a description of, of what will actually happen along with the draft bylaw. So you can follow it that way, too, as part of it.
Since we've initiated this after the Route 28 Visioning Study, we've had over 20 outreach meetings with the public, and we're still going... meetings with the public, and we're still going on. There'll probably be another three or four before even town meeting.
Okay, good. Thanks, Art. Thanks, guys. You guys have worked hard on this, I get it. Worked real hard.
Shereen, do you have anything you want to say?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm just going to say, I have been, I've watched this for the entire time that I've been on the board. The early days were extremely difficult, and these were early days for me, and, but as Art has suggested, this comes out of the comprehensive plan, which goes back, I don't know, 15 years or more.
2003.
Yeah, and...
Visioning study was more recent, though, 2014.
And so, but the, in terms of the community input, and indeed, some of the divisions on the board itself, getting to a point where conversation could even productively be had, let alone beginning to work on drafts, that was some tough going in the early sledding. And I just want to say that, I mean, you've characterized some of the late stuff as being kind of a sprint to get to the goal line, but, and I've seen that as well, but you've also incorporated a lot of back and forth, a lot of input from the community among yourselves, and this is a product that really is very, very deliberate. And so I, you know, obviously, I've had the benefit of being there to watch, but I'm very supportive, and I want to commend you and the rest of the board and the staff and everybody else that had anything to do with it, including the people who come to all the meetings, time after time after time, the public, and have given their input. So thank you very much, and of course, I will support the referral as well, if we can get a motion. Unless there's, is there anything from the public? I don't see anything. I don't see anybody here. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board refer the proposed protective bylaw amendments as presented to the Planning Board for a public hearing.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Deikin?
Aye.
Mr. Schell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We look forward to seeing you when you come back.
We'll be back.
Next. Do you want to present this, or do you want me to do it?
So, Mr. Chair, the Harwich Select Board Chair had reached out to you, requesting that a meeting be set up to discuss the Monomoy Regional School District, also asking for two members of the Chatham Select Board to meet with two members from the Harwich Select Board, as well as the Town Manager, Town Administrator, and the two Finance Directors. And so, in getting this request late afternoon on Thursday, the Chair and I decided to put it on the agenda so that you could designate two members to participate in the discussions, presuming that we want to be good neighbors and participate in the discussion. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I don't remember the precise language of the email, which was addressed to me by their, I think he's the acting chairman, Mr. Handler. The clear implication was, at least I inferred, that they want to talk about the allocation of expenses and the formulas and so forth that, you know, were put into place when the two towns regionalized back in 2010, 11, 12. And my reaction was, let's, I mean, we can take a meeting, we don't have to have any prejudgment about what we would say or what we think. I think, you know, in my own view, we, there's a sentiment in town that, you know, feels that, number one, that this was established back in, at that time, and the deal was cut. An arrangement was, a new arrangement was made in 2022, I think, when the elementary schools were separated, and, you know, that was at some significant cost to Chatham. But that being said, we can, we can go and we can listen. So, and I, in answer to the question or comment Ms. Gibbs made earlier, I think their concept is that this would be a non-public meeting. That's the reason for the two members, that, again, my inference, there was nothing said about that in the email. So with that, I'll open it up to the board to see if you have any thoughts or comments.
Well, we certainly don't want to send any weak-kneed representatives. I would love to participate.
Yeah, I, that's, I want to add one thing. I think in light of your long service on the, on the school board, school committee, and your continued interest, your role in getting the regionalization thing up and considered and passed, you have to be one of the two. That's, that's my view. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo that. You know, I only know what I read in the papers, and I read the article about one of the more recent meetings of the Harwich Select Board, and we know what they want to talk about. They want to talk about the middle school. And I think anytime a neighboring community wants to talk with us about anything, we should talk with them as a matter of comedy and courtesy. We would expect the same. And I think the proposal has structured in his email to you, Mr. Chairman, is a sensible one. I think, you know, I think I said at the recent meeting, I don't favor making changes to the formula. If they have something constructive they want to talk about, we should listen to them. And I think Jeff is a logical person to, the logical person to be part of this team. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Shereen?
Hi, thanks. I agree, Jeff should be at the table. He's got the institutional history, and that's important to, to, I think, reiterate to maybe those that might not have that. But having a meeting is a trust builder. Keeping conversations going is important. One thing I do want to just put out there is, Monomoy Regional District agreement isn't the only agreement we have with Harwich. So if they want to, you know, open up one, maybe we open up another. But I'm not in favor of any of that. I think, I think what we, I think Ms. Gibbs spelled it out very nicely, if that's what they're thinking. But again, it's always good to sit down and talk about it, especially with the issues going on with the middle school, that we continue to have an open dialogue with the Select Board, Select Board in Harwich. So that's my thoughts.
I'm just going to, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, I, we need to have another person, and I think, Mike, if, you know, I'd like to see that the Chair meets with the Chair, that's always a good protocol, and that Jeff and you be the folks that take the meeting.
I appreciate that. I was just going to add something, which is an anecdote to make the point that I think needs to be very fundamental in our approach to this meeting, and hopefully will be theirs as well. We have a friend whose daughter is a senior over there at Monomoy, and we happened to run into her, and I asked her about her college situation, and she said, oh, I've been admitted to Virginia and Southern California, and one other of equal, you know, stature. And she said, but I'm waiting on some of the other ones that I applied to. And I said, well, you know, where'd you apply? Those are pretty good schools. She said, well, I'm waiting to hear from Yale. And I tell that story because I, my impression, my sense is that that school system is doing a hell of a job with the kids and the education and the acculturation, and they're coming out of there very, very well-equipped to do well in school and later in life. So I think that's something that has to be considered as well, or not as well, front and center. So I...
Michael, well said. I just want you to know that I'm not back until March 11th.
Yeah, and I just think, the, I'm with the suggestion here in the, in the staff memo that we'll just turn some dates in that we, that will work for us, and, you know, we'll give those dates to them, and we'll have a meeting whenever we, you can be there, and the rest of us can be there. So that would be my, and we can take a vote on that, or we can just make that the consensus of the board.
I think consensus is fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me, too.
And I, I think, you know, I'm happy to go. I take your point. I don't know, is Cory, I don't know when he comes back, but I, you know, let's get his input, and if he has a strong feeling about his being present, we can, we can work that out. But let's wait till he gets back, so.
Good, thanks.
All right? I think...
Motion to adjourn.
Done.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Deikin?
Aye.
And Mr. Schell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:24 PM.